Good evening Wakefield. I am calling to order this town council meeting of February 10th, 2025 at 6:02 PM. I would ask everybody to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. I see we have all councilors in attendance in person tonight. At this point, we move to item four and entertain a motion that we go into executive session to discuss litigation of 40B developments because an open session may have detrimental effects on the position of the town with the intent of returning to the open session immediately thereafter.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we move into executive session for the reasons stated.
Second.
Motion seconded. We will do a roll call vote. Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Chang?
Yes.
Counselor Butler?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
And I am a yes. That's seven zero Sherry for the record. And we will return after the executive session. We are resuming our regular meeting of the town council of February 10th, 2025 at 6:57 PM. I would ask that perhaps we start with public participation. Sherry, do we have public participation tonight or is there anybody in the crowd that's involved in public participation?
I do have some on Zoom.
Okay, you have somebody coming over?
Yeah, so the first one that has signed in is Karen McMaster, but I do not see her on at the moment. So the next, we'll go to the next one, which is Christine Ryu and I will... Beverly Catt, can you make me house please?
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know if you can see me. I have my video on, but I'll just speak.
Hi Christine, this is Mike McLean, the chair. If you could just state your name and your address and then you have three minutes just to let you know how public participation works. This is not a back and forth with the council, it's just your three minutes to present to us, okay?
I understand. I'm going to keep it to three minutes. I practiced, I might need five seconds over that, but I'm Christine Ryu, 22 Woodland Road in Wakefield. And I'm here tonight to speak to you regarding recruitment and selection of the next Wakefield Town Administrator. As described in the town charter, the Town Administrator has broad ranging authority and control over every department and the entire workforce of Wakefield. The town council can give the Town Administrator control over additional matters as well. The Wakefield Town Administrator is arguably the single most powerful person in Wakefield. I urge you to follow established best practices when recruiting and selecting our next Town Administrator, including guidance published by the Massachusetts Municipal Management Association, the International City County Management Association, and other widely recognized sources. The recruitment guidelines published by these organizations provide these very important, often repeated do's and don'ts. Do hire a professional recruiter. Don't limit your recruitment to only persons presently living in the community or to a single candidate. And do aim to attract a diversified pool of candidates. We've all seen and experienced the impacts of the extensive development going on in Wakefield with new mega schools and mega housing complexes. What once was a town feels now more like a small city. Yet the person in charge of every department to whom every town official reports is not one who is democratically elected by the citizens. I've recently been involved in numerous town meetings held by state representatives and can tell you that the public's interest in protecting democracy is high, as is their enthusiasm for participating in decisions that affect their communities. For these reasons, I urge the town council to democratize the process and develop a community involvement plan to involve citizens in the recruitment and selection of Wakefield's next Town Administrator. I contend that doing so would strengthen the recruitment pool, the selection process, and community support and participation going forward. At a minimum, the community involvement plan should address the following activities: full transparency and communication to the public of the recruitment and selection process through their website, in the local newspaper, and through other outreach mechanisms, including the public opportunities for citizen involvement in the process; appointing a screening committee per town charter section 4-1 with citizen representation; the role of the screening committee would be to assist the town council and professional recruiter in defining the qualities and characteristics of what the town is looking for in a Town Administrator, in addition to those that are in the town charter; narrow down the diversified pool of candidates identified by a recruiter; develop interview questions and participate in the selection process itself. In addition, I urge the town council host finalist interviews on the local cable TV network where citizens can submit questions for the finalists. I have additional concerns and suggestions that you want to follow me to cover and I are including a detailed letter that I will submit to the town council. Thank you for your attention and for your service to the town.
Thank you Christine. I believe we are approaching 7:03, which is the time we have on the schedule for...
Yes.
...in public hearing?
You could go back to public participation after the public hearing if you wish.
Okay, do we have, yeah, do we have more public participation just for the record?
Yes, we do.
Okay, we'll go back to that because we are at 7:03 and our schedule says that at this point we should open the public hearing regarding the beer and wine license of Circle K, 448 Salem Street. Do we need a roll call on this one, Steve?
You actually don't.
Okay.
Yeah, we always have done it, but we don't.
Want me to do a roll call? We can do a roll call.
Nothing, it doesn't hurt.
All right, let's take a roll call. Counselor Carney?
Do you need a motion first?
Oh, a motion first. These guys are great on process.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we open up the public hearing as noticed.
Second.
Motion seconded. I'm going straight up with all those in favor. And we have seven zero Sherry. The public hearing is now open. Anyone is going to come forward and present? Take your time. And as noted, try to speak into the mics so everybody can hear.
Good evening. Is this on? Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you. It's for the recording.
Oh, okay. Good evening Chairman, members of the board. My name is Elizabeth Pizzano. I'm from Upton, Cornell, and Devlin on behalf of the applicant Circle K. With me tonight is Nancy Benugli. She is the proposed manager of record at the Circle K store. This application is for a new Section 15 wine and malts package store license at its existing convenience store at 448 Salem Street. The applicant possesses the character in fitness and operational systems to ensure responsible alcohol sales at this location. Circle K is a national chain that is, has a very recognized brand with a long history of success operating convenience stores, many of them which have liquor licenses here in Massachusetts and across the country. They are, they are committed to demonstrating a strong compliance with state and local liquor laws. Nancy is TIP certified and she will ensure that her entire staff at the store is also TIP certified so that there are no issues with sales to minors. They will be properly IDing people and all of the things associated with the responsible sale of alcohol. And if we can answer any questions that you may have, we're happy to do so.
Questions from voters? Counselor Butler?
Yes, I think one of the differences between your application and probably our other liquor and other licensees is that your hours are decidedly longer than almost every other. And I don't believe we have any sort of convenience store and it's really, it's a gas station and convenience store. So I don't believe we have any other setups like that either in town or that I can recall seeing in Middlesex County anyway recently.
I think it would be great for the community to have another location that does have the extended hours. They're open until 10 o'clock just to meet the demand of people who might be working late or, you know, can't get to a liquor store, you know, within their limited hours. And it's kind of a one stop shop for people who are getting gas, might, you know, need to grab some quick items, their beer and wine. I'm not sure if that's where you're getting it, but...
Yeah, I think it was just, I wasn't sure. The hours that you would be selling beer and wine would be the same as the hours the store is open or if it shuts off at a certain time. And I don't know the state laws around that either, so.
It would have to follow state laws because we are a 24/7 store. We just underwent a full gut remodel, expanded the store. We do provide, you know, an array of goods as far as hot foods and cold foods and those are available 24 hours a day. But yeah, it would go by the state laws for sure.
Sundays you can't before 10 a.m., but, but yeah.
Is this a 24 hour establishment?
It is.
This is, yes.
And what are the state laws relative to the sale of liquor?
So the state does leave the towns discretion to decide whether you want to permit them to serve before, I believe it's 10 o'clock on Sundays. They leave it up to the towns to decide on how early they want their liquor establishments to be open or not. But our application, we're looking for a 10 p.m. closing, like a 10 p.m. stop on alcohol sales, I believe, right? Yeah.
And as part of the remodel, they have carved out a spot in the store that would specifically be the beer and wine cave that would close off.
At 10 o'clock Monday, seven days a week?
Seven days a week, 10 p.m.
Yes, we'd be able to lock that part of the store.
Is it just beer and wine or is it nips as well?
No, just beer and wine.
Counselor Dombrowski?
A few questions for you. First, can you help me understand why it is that if you just went through the remodel, you would have created a beer and wine cave without first coming to get permission before this body?
The wine cave isn't part of this yet. They haven't started, they haven't done that.
We haven't done any of the work. It's just part of the second phase.
If we were approved.
And looking at your application here, the addendum A, the proposed officer's stock and ownership interest. And I'm a bit confused because in looking at this, it indicates, if I'm reading this correctly, Max Convenience Stores out of Columbus, Indiana with a 100% ownership interest? And then down from that, it's Couche Tard U.S. Inc. out of Columbus, Indiana with a 100% interest. Can you help reconcile why that both, there are two different principles identified as each having 100% interest?
So if you look at the org chart actually, so Circle K Massachusetts LLC is a licensed entity. That's what all the liquor, their other liquor licenses in Massachusetts are all under this entity, Circle K Massachusetts LLC. The 100% owner of the licensed entity or the proposed licensed entity here is Max Convenience Stores LLC. Then the 100% owner of Max Convenience Stores LLC is the Couche Tard U.S. Inc. And then it goes up and up and up. And the ultimate owner is a publicly traded company on the Toronto Stock Exchange. So it's a publicly traded Canadian company who has ultimate owner. But there are just levels of ownership interest that, you know, it's all, it's all member managed, so it's, or these entities are stockholders. It's just their, their org chart, their structure chart that they, that they use. I don't know the reasons for every single entity to be quite honest, but this is how their structure chart is and their ownership structure is for all of their liquor licenses in Massachusetts and across the country.
I guess what I'm getting at is, I mean, we're talking about a foreign entity that's traded on the Toronto Stock Exchange. And when we normally have folks coming in for licenses, I feel like, you know, there's the owner presence, there is an individual to whom, you know, we can direct questions or there's a level of accountability. And it feels like, you know, there's like a bunch of, I don't want to call them shell corps because that's perhaps not appropriate, but there's a number of layers of corporate entities that keep any sort of individual who actually has an ownership interest far removed from the discussion that we're having here at this small community meeting. And that feels a little bit uncomfortable to me because I know that oftentimes when we're talking about concerns we have relative to especially beer and wine, which is an important consideration for us in a community of our size, we have owners who are identifiable, who are often present, who are able to answer questions, and also able to make commitments to us. And I don't feel like we have any of that given this rather, you know, several times removed corporate structure that's, that's come before, hire a law firm and put their manager up to do this. So it suddenly feels not quite right to me relative to the way that this is being presented.
There are some, there are officers that are disclosed in our application that we've provided their personal information for, for the licensed entity, David, Kathleen, and Melissa. They're all hands on deck and they make all the decision making for anything related to the sale of alcohol. They are responsible for making sure their managers and employees are all TIP certified. They are responsible alcohol certified. You know, they go through extensive training programs. They take the sale of alcohol extremely seriously. They've had a clean record here in Massachusetts. They have, like I said, other locations and other towns. And to be quite honest, Nancy actually impressed me because, you know, like I do agree sometimes it is better to have the face of Circle K, but this is a publicly traded company, so it's, it is a little difficult to have, you know, somebody who has an ownership interest, you know, come to a small, come out for a small town meeting, to be quite frank. However, the way that they hire and train their staff, especially the management, they take it extremely seriously. Nancy moved here from Tewksbury a couple of years ago and started managing Circle K. And her legit words to me walking in here was, "I treat it like this is my own store." She takes extremely, extreme, extreme pride in the store and making sure that her staff are complying, especially with the tobacco sales and IDing them and making sure she's got that under control and that her staff has it under control. She takes a great amount of pride in that store and she does treat it like it's her own, like she is an owner. So, you know, you do have Nancy here who's committing to the town that she is going to train her staff and make sure that everybody is TIP certified. And we're more than happy to give you those TIP certifications to show proof that everybody has undergone this training. Sometimes it's more, not persuasive, but it looks better when you have somebody from the program come out and have an in-person meeting rather than doing it on, you know, the computer and technology is a little bit more face to face. If you would like to, you know, ask that they have an in-person training and then, you know, we can provide you all of the TIP certifications for every employee if that does make you feel a little bit more comfortable. I mean, I'm happy also to continue this, to have one of the owners or have one of the officers at the license level join us if that, if you'd like that.
Well, I mean, it just strikes me that, you know, you mentioned that, oh, it's difficult for, you know, multinational corporations to have, have a presence at a small town community meeting. Well, this small, that small town community meeting is the forum in which you're seeking a pretty significant request. And so, you know, I do think I take issue with that. And I did look at the proposed, you know, board here and we're talking about someone who's living in Indiana, another person living in Arizona, and another person who lives out basically central to western part of the state. And so there's not even someone in this area code or a neighboring area code that has a presence here. So that, that just strikes me as uncomfortable. Can I just ask Madam Clerk, where do we stand in terms of how many licenses we have available for this kind of establishment?
Yeah, so this is considered a Section 15 beer and wine, which is considered a package store. So currently, we have six available.
Out of, do you know about how many we've assigned by chance?
We have, for a Section 15 beer and wine package store, we have not assigned any, so we have six available.
Thank you.
Counselor Carney?
No, no apologizing necessary, but I'm against the concept. You know, I think that you're going to see, you have six beer and wine licenses to get up. You're going to close every liquor store in the town because the profit goes right down the drain and now you have to go out of town to get, get any other kind of liquor. You know, and again, state law was passed that we can, you know, get more licenses out. I don't think we have to. I think there's no requirement we do. I just think it's unfair to the people who've been doing businesses in town for years. And I think we're compromising their ability to make a profit. And quite frankly, a couple of them are having a pretty tough time right now.
This would only be a beer and wine, so, you know, the other liquor stores aren't necessarily in competition.
I believe...
It's not going to be a huge array of alcohol either, so...
But basically, the beer and wine profit is being taken from the other liquor stores who make money on that. Okay? So, I mean, basically, you're kind of diluting their ability to make a profit. So if you go to one store for hard, if you went to one store for all the hard spirits, another one for the beer, the beer license is going to make out. So I think you're diluting the market here. You're diluting the ability for people to make a profit.
Counselor Butler?
I don't, I respectfully disagree with Counselor Carney around that, around, I don't know, I don't know if you're shocked at Circle K, but I'm betting that the Bud Lights at Circle K are not going to come in cheaper than the ones at, at our town liquor stores. I'm guessing they're a convenience store and they're going to price it appropriately. I guess speaking to, you probably have lottery there and you have tobacco right now. Do we have any history of sort of issues with either Circle K or was it Irving before?
It's still Irving.
Oh, the gas is Irving.
Gas and Circle K.
None.
Okay. And then, I mean, I think, yes, we wouldn't expect the CEO of 7-Eleven to come out here. Couche Tard is a gigantic corporation. They're like $73 billion. They're, they're big. So we don't expect to have that, I would say. And the other thing is, is I would argue in general, I didn't come into this thinking that I was pro this application, but I will say, like, we've let, you know, we've let any number of liquor stores renew their licenses with much shadier histories and records than these people have or these people are coming before us with. So I think that, I don't mind the idea of beer and wine licenses. I don't, I don't think that eats into people's profitability, especially there. I'm not even sure that there's, the closest liquor store there is like Whole Foods and the one in Linfield. Like, I think we're not, we're not taking any Wakefield business. Nobody who's going there is, I can't even, maybe S&amp;M Liquors, but other than that, it would be rare still. Like there, it's a good location for them because there's not anybody right there.
Thank you for that. I do agree that, you know, you are getting a reliable company by having Circle K have a liquor license here. They, they really do go through an extensive training and, you know, they, they take it very seriously and they wouldn't want to damage their name and their reputation by ever coming before you again for a violation. They invest time and money and efforts into training their staff. I represent them at other locations in Massachusetts, so I do know that the, the extensive training that they go through and like Nancy said to me walking in, I mean, she takes her job very seriously. You know, she's been here for a couple of years now. She's a, she's a citizen of Wakefield and she treats this store like it's her own. So they, although yes, they are ultimately owned by a publicly traded corporation, they make sure that they have the right management staff at their local stores to make sure that operations are running smoothly. The other officers are involved day to day of every single decision making, especially over any question about liquor sales. They're involved in every part of the decision making process and those are the people that we've disclosed in our application and have provided their personal information for. So we've given you people who have the ultimate authority and control over liquor sales and who are involved in the day to day operations and the decision making process over it. If it does, like I said, if it makes you more comfortable, we could continue this and I can request that they be present on Zoom or something of that nature, just so you guys can meet them face to face if that does help. But I just, I would just like to throw it out there again that they've done a great job throughout Massachusetts in complying with alcohol sales and haven't had any issues.
Counselor Chang?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for, for the application and for coming before us today. I don't feel the need to continue this. I think one of the things that we have to face as a community is that as we grow our business community, as we grow our commercial tax base, you know, we are going to have entities that come in that are owned differently, whether it's a publicly traded company, whether it's a local business, and, you know, 17 different things in between. You know, this is a business where we've had no issues to speak of in terms of the current products that you sell, that we regulate. You know, accepting this license doesn't put us at risk of turning away another license because we are, you know, materially below the cap. I personally am in favor of this and wish you the best of luck as you move forward.
Thank you. I do agree with you that the economic contribution of Circle K getting a liquor license would be great for the town. I mean, the, the taxes and the increased revenue that Circle K would have would only benefit the town.
Counselor Butt?
Can I just ask Nancy for you because, so people who sell it have to be over 21. Currently, like how, no? Chief score, are you shaking your head?
I believe it's 18.
Oh, it's 18?
Yeah.
Oh, I was wrong. Okay. But so do you have staff that's younger than 18 now?
We do not hire below 18 for tobacco sales. And if I could just add, I average 60 to 65 hours a week there. Currently, my four to midnight guy has been with the company for 18 years. We have tobacco stings with the state. We also have bars come in. We do never press an over 40 button. We have to physically see the ID and my staff is completely trained for that. We look at pictures. If it's an older person, then we do input the date, but for the most part, it's a straight scan. If my 86 year old mother came in to buy cigarettes, my clerks would card her. And I'm telling you that with complete confidence. I've been with the company for 22 months. I moved to Wakefield for a job and I just came back from Jamaica in November as a first year manager with the company qualifying for a trip based on my performance in store. So I take it very seriously.
And for anybody who doesn't know what the bars program is, it's a third party company that will come out and basically test your employees. So a lot, I can go into the details of it, but a lot of restaurants use it just to make sure that their staff is all complying with the rules and regulations. So they, somebody will come in from the bars program, they'll basically come in and just try to order. If you're at a restaurant, they'll try and order a glass of wine or whatever it may be at the bar, order a drink. Or if it's a package store, they'll try to go in and order alcohol. And they will make sure that everybody is carding. And if they fail, if they do not... And if they fail, if they do not ID, then they'll get a red flag, and if they pass, they'll get a green flag. And they do it all the time, so they're constantly checking in with the establishment, and then they send a report on how everybody did to the company. So, and it's great for, you know, companies like national chain restaurants. I have a lot of national chain restaurant clients that implement this because they're a national brand, right, and their owners can't be at every single restaurant, so they entrust their managers to make sure that everybody is trained properly, not only trained properly, but making sure they don't forget it six months down the road, or a year, two years, five years, whatever it may be. So they constantly are having a couple of check-ins every quarter to make sure everybody's doing their job, so that underage sales never happen.
So just, sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I just, so I just need to understand this. So, uh, 'cause, so everyone hired is over 18, and like, as they're hired, they're trained on the serving alcohol and the tobacco stuff?
We currently don't have alcohol, so it's tobacco. And we're recertified, on average, they have to re-watch the video and recertify almost every three months.
Almost every three months?
Yeah, for the tobacco.
And then just explain to me again about the hours, just because this is the first time, so, I didn't even realize it was for 24 hours. So you're up in 24 hours? So would you stop selling alcohol, I understand Sunday, but would you stop selling at like 10 o'clock at night or 11 o'clock at night?
Yes, 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock, every night?
That's what we're requesting, is that for a 10:00 p.m. end of sales.
And starting what, what time?
Um, 8:00 a.m., except for Sunday.
Okay.
So 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., six days a week, and then 10:00 a.m. to, I mean, yeah, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Sundays.
And can liquor stores start at 8:00 a.m. in town?
Yes.
Okay.
Monday through Saturday.
Okay.
10:00. 10:00. Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chairman McLean. Nancy, you've been there for 22 months. I, I assume you have a lot of regular customers, people that come in, either walk in or drive in on a regular basis?
Yes, we do.
And you strike me as the type of person that you probably know their first name?
I certainly do.
And you interact with them and ask them how their family's doing and how their children are doing, and?
I, I certainly do.
So although it's a company that's owned by a multinational organization, I would assume that your regular customers feel like they're in a small-town atmosphere, and this is their store, and they have a personal relationship with you, and it, it just gives it a small-town type feel. Would you agree with that?
A hundred percent. I, I took over 22 months ago, and I've, I've been in retail for a very long time. I'm very good with names. I like to get to know people. You come in, I like to be able to say, hi, Joe, you know, whoever it is, and that happens on a daily basis. And if you, you know, snuck up upon me tomorrow, you'd see exactly that going on in the store. You know, I get to know my customers, I get to know what they, cigarettes they smoke, I get to know what type of cokes they drink, and like I said, I put a lot of hours into the store. Additionally, running a 24-hour store, the main reason for moving to Wakefield, which I absolutely adore after being in Tuxbury for 28 years, was to be close to the, to the facility. I am accessible to my staff 24/7. My daughter served in the military for seven years. I answer my phone, I'm not avoiding calls, and my staff knows for even the smallest flip, you know, somebody's car didn't go through, they think it went through, the customers I rate, they can call me at 2:00 in the morning, and I answer the phone.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
That's all I have, thank you.
Any comments from the counselors? Counselor, go ahead.
Sorry, I haven't been since the new renovations. Is there, is there seating inside?
No seating.
Okay.
And no seating outside?
No seating, no, key no seating. I, I don't want that. I don't want any kind of loitering type of situation, so no seating.
Thank you.
Counselor? And this is probably a moral question, I'm not sure for whom. We have six licenses. How long have we had those licenses, and why have, why is this, is this the first time that somebody's coming before us?
The first time anyone has applied for.
For just a beer or wine?
Yep.
Any idea why?
I'm happy that no one did before.
I, I understand that, but I'm like, okay. So we have six. Could we increase that, or is that at our discretion, or is that states?
That's based on population.
Okay. That's my other question, is like, you know, you're first, so it's fine, but as these become more scarce and more valuable, it may make sense for, you know, for us to be more choosy about who we have.
I think with our history and experience of running convenience stores with alcohol sales and having a great reputation, not having any issues here on the other stores in Massachusetts, you know, you, it's a good risk to take on us because we have the finances and the big corporation really to back us up to be able to run an establishment properly and to make sure that, you know, if we need to get ID trackers specifically for alcohol, do you have one, a machine that you put in for the tobacco, like you said, the scanner?
Yes.
Yeah, so, you know, if you're gonna, if another, say, another liquor store applicant comes in, they might not have the finances to be able to go through and have every single one of their employees go through chip certifications every three months. I mean, it's expensive, it's a commitment. Bars program is expensive. It's like, it's thousands of dollars. It's, you know, then you, you're getting a machine, which is thousands of dollars to make sure, you know, it's a, it's a lot of money to invest to make, it doesn't seem like it, you know, when you're just thinking about safe service of alcohol, but it's a lot of money to invest in that, and Circle K is doing that, and if another applicant was to come in, maybe a local person, which I do understand the value of having local business and supporting local businesses, but you're not gonna get that level of training and that level of investment to the responsible sale of alcohol and training. So I do think that is one positive outlook for having, you know, a big company like Circle K be able to sell beer and wine.
Counselor Dabreski?
Counselor Mullin, the, the Section 15 licenses, of which we have six, those are available for establishments like this, right? Would that be inclusive of convenience stores as well as places like the new cheese shop that just opened on Water Street? Or?
As well as what?
The new cheese shop that just opened on Water Street. That was, that wasn't, that was under Section 15, but they, that was a beer, and that was a?
And spirits.
And spirits, right? So, because this is beer and wine, so this could be, we could be thinking about like Cumberland Farms?
Right.
Coming to us, we could think about?
Shaw's.
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 Yeah.
And, and any, any other, basically, any entity can come, but it would have to be a non-restaurant entity, in essence.
That's right.
It would, okay. So I do think there, we do, here's some potential, you know, for the scarcity there. The other piece is, my point in saying it's multinational corporation is not to shy to multinational corporation, but to say that, understanding how multinational corporations work, there is a whole infrastructure in place. So there are regional folks, there are local folks, and my point being, there's no one present, aside from obviously yourself, you know, representing from the ownership or the, the entity itself, which to me strikes me as, as unusual. The other piece is, you're mentioning that the sales commencing at 8:00 a.m., and even if that is what is currently allowed, I don't see any legitimate purpose for alcohol to be available at 8:00 a.m. Monday through Saturday. I just don't. I mean, I guess on the off-chance.
That's because you work nine to five, or nine to seven.
Like a majority of, of folks, probably, right? But even if you're working the overnight, I don't see the, the reason for the 8:00 a.m. It, it strikes me as, I, I have seen folks that have gone into the, the establishments in town at that hour, and I see them go in there frequently with a cadence that does not present as, as appropriate. It's troubling. And so I, I do question, you know, why it is that you'd have to begin selling alcohol at 8:00 a.m. Monday through Saturday?
I'll just tell you my personal reason. I am a working mother, I have a couple of children under the age of five, I work from 7:30 till, probably won't see my children tonight when I get home, but stopped for gas this morning on my way into work. Would have been great if I could pick up a bottle of wine while I'm getting my gas this morning. I have very limited, I have a limited amount of time to get 500 errands done in a day. So if I can get my gas, maybe grab a bottle of wine for Valentine's Day this week, you know what I mean? So it's, there are people who do have limited amount of time, and I mean no disrespect at all, but I know for me personally, like, that's my reason. I mean, if I'm getting gas and I need to maybe grab a medicine for my kids or something quick in the convenience store, and I can just grab a bottle of wine, oh, that's saving me one last trip to the liquor store that might not be open until 9:00 o'clock, or I might not be able to get there, you know, when they close at 7:00 or 8:00, because I do work late nights and I do start early mornings. You know, it's just, it's just another level of convenience.
But if you were to follow through your argument, though, then why would, we, we have different hours on Sundays, and why would we not, why would we stop at 10? Why would, why not go to, why not go to 2:00 in the morning? Do you see, you know what I'm saying? Because if we're talking about maximizing convenience for different work schedules, so there's obviously some intentionality behind?
So 10:00 a.m. is?
A stretch of hours.
10:00 a.m. is because that's, state law does not permit you to?
I recognize that, but obviously for a reason, right?
I think that 10:00 p.m. is to actually make you guys feel more comfortable about being open till 10:00 p.m. I mean, this is a small town, right? So do we really want, I mean, do you really want people to go and, you know, be buying alcohol past 10:00 p.m.? It could just cause another level of, you know, chaos, or maybe there are intoxicated people that you shouldn't be serving alcohol to that late at night. I mean, there are, there are many reasons to stop selling at 10:00 p.m. You know, we're open to any suggestions that you have if, if you're not comfortable with the 10:00 p.m. end time for the alcohol sales. Perhaps it's 9:00.
I, I thought the 12-hour window of time is sufficient for people to be able to purchase alcohol on a given day, and if for some reason you have to miss that particular day and maybe purchase it the next, I think that's okay. You know, these are?
Yeah, I agree with you, yeah.
We're not, we're not selling insulin here, you know? We're, we're talking, you know, about something that is, is non-essential, so like a 10 to 10 feels a little more comfortable. Seven days a week, from my perspective, but I'm one of.
I guess, I guess the question would be, do you sell a lot between 8:00 and 10:00 a.m. in the morning?
My busiest times for gas begin at 6:00 a.m., and then?
But do you sell a lot of beer and wine in those?
Oh, we don't have, we don't have, currently have a license.
Oh, that's right.
I can find out, you know, what other stores in Massachusetts are doing.
I, I think that, you know, my only concern is that we do have the six licenses, and, you know, we grant the first one, and then we might have five more come in, and, you know, then, to your point, Counselor Carney, then we are really diluting the sales throughout the whole town.
How many, how many applications have you had for a beer and wine license in the past like five years?
This is it.
Yep, so we've had zero in the six years that I've been on.
Right, right.
So I, I don't know if you're gonna get a rush of five new?
We don't either, and I suppose our argument at that point could be that you guys were just so good that, you know, that we're gonna, we're gonna start trimming it down and cutting it off, but, you know, you don't always feel comfortable doing that either.
Right.
So I would, I would, just to move this along, I, I would move that we approve this license with the condition that the hours are 10:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. seven days a week. Do you have issue with that?
I, I do not, but I can't speak for the company. I mean, I can, I'm just here on my own merit and my dedication to the facility.
And I respect that.
And my assurance that, you know, I would make sure, but I would have no problem with that, but that would have to go through the company.
That feels comfortable to me, because I don't, I, I don't see a lot of positive coming out of alcohol sales between 8:00 a.m. and 10:00 a.m. on a, on a weekday, personally. So I would move that we approve this license with the hours from 10:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. seven days a week.
Don't we let every other liquor store stay open at eight?
Yes.
So we let every other, we're gonna make these people wait till 10, and we're gonna let Jeffries open at eight?
I, I'm not saying, I don't think that the precedent we're setting here is one that can't be extended beyond this, but I do think we have the opportunity now to stop the, the early sale of alcohol, which I think is a good thing, and we can address the other, the other entities on a go-forward basis. But I think that this is an opportunity here, this, you're the, the first to receive this particular license class, Section 15 class. I'd like to see us setting a standard of, of 10:00 a.m. going forward, and I'd like to see that discussion going forward with other entities, but that's not before us tonight, that's not your concern, but you're asking us for a license, and I think that that feels appropriate to me.
I believe there are other Section 15 licenses in your town. This isn't the first one.
Not, not relative to the beer and wine that we're talking, that, your, your license for your entity?
There was a motion made that has not been seconded.
Correct.
So far, correct. Do we have a second on the motion?
Seeing none, I would like to make a motion to approve the license with the hours as proposed by the applicant.
Seconded.
Motion seconded, any further discussion on this motion?
We need to do public comment.
Ah.
Well, we, I, I first, I will say that, I'm, I'm going to oppose this because I don't support the hours, but I do get the sense you run a very good business, and I respect you for that, and I thank you for being a good neighbor to our community.
Thank you.
Before we get to a vote, is there any public comment? Seeing that the public thinks that we've exhausted this, I will then ask for all those in favor. Opposed? That motion carries five to two. Sherry? Counselors Dabreski and Carney, opposed. Thank you very much for spending all the time with us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're happy to answer any questions. We're an open line of communication. I can give you my contact information, you know where to finance, so if you have any problems, any concerns, any issues, open line of communication. Please reach out to us anytime.
Good.
You know, we're, we're happy to work with you guys. We want to be good business systems and, and make sure Wakefield stays safe, and, you know, like I said, I will, we will all make sure that there is a responsible sale of alcohol here.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck.
Thank you very much for your time.
This is Sherry. What is the public moving?
They're seconded.
They're seconded annually. We have a motion and a second to close the public meeting.
Okay.
Motion and a second to close the public meeting. Any discussion on that? Those in favor? Opposed? That's 7-0. Sherry, thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay, we are now back into our regular meeting schedule, and we have, I believe, town administration 7A discussion is state delegation?
Yes.
Should we do the last public comment? Public participation?
Oh, my goodness, I forgot about our remaining public participation. Thank you all for reminding me. Sure, Sherry, are we bringing Ms. McMaster over?
Um, yeah, so she's been on a couple times, but I don't see her on at the moment, but we do have Jim Sullivan, who would like to join for public participation.
Okay. I think you know the drill, Jim. Name and address in three minutes.
Very good, thank you. Jim Sullivan, 6 Hawick Road. I understand the state delegation is meeting with you all tonight. I just have some comments I'd like to bring forward. So I've been in the community over 30 years, I've been on the Finance Committee 12 years, currently the chairperson of the Finance Committee here in Wakefield. My comments are my comments, not the overall Finance Committee, but having the ability to work with many of the folks in this room, just the preliminary cherry sheet estimates were very disappointing to me. We are a community of 27, 28,000 people. When we look at taxing the community and trying to meet the financial needs of the community, there are many competing priorities. When I look at the money for Chapter 70, unrestricted government aid, I'm looking for the delegation, hoping that the delegation, I'm sure you folks will talk about this, to help improve these numbers. I think it was a 1.66 net year-over-year between givebacks. Again, the Town Council, I believe, does a great job trying to manage the money and manage the, the competing priorities. The administration, the town administration, we work closely with on the Finance Committee. I believe they do a great job. The Finance Committee itself, we work hard to try to manage and help where we can as the appointed board. When I look at some of the state aid and the potential alternatives for use of money with the state, it seems like it's grants and targeted funding. And some of that doesn't always support what we need in the community, like Wakefield and other communities. You know, we've had a number of collective bargaining agreements been approved that numbers much larger, 1.66%, for example. And I believe most of the folks in the state legislature support, you know, these employees in the collective bargaining process for which they, they go through bargaining for their raises. But we need to work together with the delegation and with the state, you know? If we're working together to give appropriate raises through a collective bargaining agreement, we need the money to support that. The tax base in the town does quite a lift in the town of Wakefield and I believe, you know, we need to continue to work together to get more through the state aid. The unrestricted government aid, the Chapter 70, possibly changes to the circuit breaker and then obviously the school funding formula has just not been friendly to Wakefield again. Lastly, the millionaire's tax, the recently new tax for use, you know, within the state. Now, as I understood it, it was, you know, there was a lot of money put forward for and against, and I felt it was sold as it'd be used for schools and roads and bridges. Last year, I believe, the money towards the schools went to free college tuition, free community college tuition. Didn't sound like a lot of that went to the town. Some of it may have. This year, I believe, the money that's going to the schools as, as mostly, most outlined by the governor was buildings in, in the state university, the state university system. Again, I just don't see some of that millionaire's tax coming back to the state, excuse me, to the community. You know, when we look at our schools and we look at what we try to do in this community, we, we do work hard to try to meet the needs and meet the priorities.
Hey, Jim, Jim, just to remind you, you're over thirty, three minutes now.
Thank you. I just asked the delegation to understand where we're coming from and appreciate what more they can do on behalf of the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sherry, do we have other public participation available?
Uh, no, it looks like we're all set for right now.
All ready? Then I believe we are at the 7As on the discussions with the state delegation, please. Come on forward.
Should we kick it off or did you?
Did you get my email?
I did not, no.
Okay, I just, I just said we may be working on a four to five hour meeting tonight, so, you know, to the extent that we're, we're gleeful to have you kick it off, but if you could, if you can make it a few minutes, that would be great.
Good. Should I keep it off?
Please.
All right. All right, well, good evening, everybody. State Senator Jason Lewis and obviously joined by my colleagues in the delegation, Representatives Lipic, Arabidian and Wong. It's good to be back with you all this evening. Thank you for inviting us to give you an update on what's happening on Beacon Hill, especially the FY26 budget process. Want to thank you all for your service on behalf of the residents of Wakefield. It's a lot of work, time and effort you all put in, away from your families, and we want you to know we appreciate that. We also, the three of us also appreciate the strong partnership that we, we have now and have had for a long time between the Town Council and other town leaders and the state delegation. I think that's very important, that we work closely together. We know this is a very challenging time for many cities and towns across Massachusetts. The end of federal pandemic relief dollars, both that went directly to municipalities and to our schools, the high inflation that we experienced for several years during the pandemic, and also the rapid growth in some of the costs, especially in our schools, like special education costs and school transportation, and, and there's others, have all, in my mind, created a perfect storm for many school districts and municipalities. I certainly share your concerns in terms of some of these fiscal challenges, especially the potential impact that it might have on Wakefield schools and on its students. Speaking for myself, having high-quality, well-funded public schools has always been one of my top priorities in the state legislature and is in fact what first motivated me to run for office a number of years ago. Since I was first elected, I pushed hard for the creation of what was known as the Foundation Budget Review Commission that recommended changes, important, very important changes to the Chapter 70 school funding formula. And then I helped lead the effort to pass the Student Opportunity Act, which was signed into law in 2019 by former Governor Baker. The Student Opportunity Act was the most significant update to our school funding formula since it was first created in 1993. The SOA is being phased in over six years and once fully implemented will increase state funding for public schools in Massachusetts by more than $1.5 billion, and that's real dollars. So that's over and above increases to account for inflation. Fiscal year '26, which is the budget we're working, all working on now, starts July 1st of this year, will be the fifth year of SOA implementation, the fifth out of six, and is fully funded in Governor Healy's recently released budget proposal. Her, her budget includes $7.3 billion in total for the Chapter 70 program, which would be a 6.1% increase over fiscal year '25. By the way, the Chapter 70 program is the second largest part of the state budget. Only thing larger in the state budget is our Medicaid program, Mass Health. The town of Wakefield has benefited significantly from the passage of the Student Opportunity Act. Wakefield is receiving $8.9 million in Chapter 70 funding from the state this current fiscal year, fiscal year '25. That's an increase of 40% over the $6.4 million that the town received in fiscal year '19 before the SOA was passed. In Governor Healy's fiscal year '26 budget, Wakefield receives $9.1 million in Chapter 70 funds. This is approximately $1.6 million more than the town would otherwise be receiving if the Student Opportunity Act had not been enacted. Again, it's approximately 1.6 million dollars that the town is receiving under the governor's budget above what the town would otherwise be receiving if those changes to the, the formula had not gone through back in fiscal year '19. In addition to updating the Chapter 70 formula, the Student Opportunity Act also added transportation costs for the first time to the state's special education circuit breaker. As you probably know, this program reimburses 75% of the costs incurred by local school districts for out-of-district special education placements, which are typically the most expensive students and have the most acute needs. The circuit breaker is also fully funded in Governor Healy's fiscal year '26 budget proposal. So prior to the SOA, the state was reimbursing 75% of tuition costs, but no reimbursements for transportation. That changed in the SOA that was phased in over four years and is now fully funded, proposed to be fully funded in the FY26 budget. Representative Lipic, Arabidian, Representative Wong and I have also prioritized budget earmarks that benefit the town of Wakefield. In just the last two fiscal years, we've worked hard to secure numerous earmarks for Wakefield. And just to quickly mention those, and my colleagues may have more to say about those, but they included $65,000 for repairs to the band, town bandstand, and great job to, to the town for following through on that. They did a great job. Two different earmarks for the BB library, but one, one of those was for $75,000 in fiscal year '24 and the second was for $50,000 in fiscal year '25 for various capital improvements to the, to the library facility. $10,000 for the Wakefield-Linfield Chamber of Commerce, which they used to put up new, the new banners in the downtown. $35,000 for general public safety improvements, that was at the discretion of the town as to how to use those funds. $25,000 for WCAT, where we are today and to help support the tremendous work they do and thank you to WCAT for the work they do to support the community. And then we also secured $75,000 for the Boys and Girls Club of Stonemont, Wakefield, which was key to opening the Inspire Cafe, which many of you were at the ribbon-cutting for that new facility on, on Main Street in Wakefield. So there's, there are others, but the, those are some of the key ones that, that we were happy to secure on behalf of the community. As you know, the delegation has also, along with all of you and the school committee and the, and the community at large, been strong champions for the new Wakefield High School project happening right next door. As part of the fiscal year '24 state budget two years ago, we were successful in convincing our colleagues to include a plan that enabled the MSBA to make supplemental grants to school-building projects that were impacted by inflation and supply chain disruptions during the pandemic. That was something that the MSBA had never done before. It was the first time in their history that they were able to make supplemental grants. And again, that was only because of the plan that was put forward and approved by our colleagues in the legislature. And as a result of that, Wakefield is receiving an additional $15 million in state funding over and above the already agreed-upon reimbursement from the state for, to help cover the costs of the new Wakefield High School. By the way, the new Northeast Regional Vocational High School, also being built just up the street, was another project that benefited from that plan. And as a result of that additional funding, approximately 20 million that Northeast received, they are able to reduce the assessments on the sending districts and that will benefit Wakefield taxpayers as well. Despite these additional resources that the state, with the support of the delegation, has provided to Wakefield in various different ways, we certainly recognize the challenging fiscal situation facing the town in fiscal year '26. Wakefield is certainly not alone in that. There are many different cities and towns, as I'm sure you're all aware and have been hearing about, that are facing a tough fiscal outlook for the coming year, again, for some of the factors that I mentioned earlier. In the months ahead, as we develop the fiscal year '26 state budget in the legislature, we will do everything we can to prioritize funding for education and for unrestricted local aid to try to increase the amount that Wakefield will receive in the final fiscal year '26 budget. For those not familiar with the state budget process, the governor's budget is just the beginning of the process. The next step will be public hearings around the state where the public can weigh in on the, on the, on the state's budget. My colleagues will talk about their plans for the House budget, which is in April, that, when they debate it. The Senate will debate the budget in May and then we work to complete the final budget in June to get to the governor's desk. So that's the process. Some of you are very familiar with it, for some of you who are not, that's what we'll be working on in the months ahead. An example of an area where we could try to work together to increase the amount of funding for Wakefield is in Governor Healy's budget, in her calculations for Chapter 70, she's proposing $75 in per pupil minimum aid. And so the amount that Wakefield's receiving in, in its increased Chapter 70 is essentially $75 times the enrollment in the Wakefield schools. So that's how that amount's calculated. Last year, the legislature provided $104 in per pupil minimum aid. So we went well beyond what the governor proposed last year because we wanted to do more to support our communities. And I will certainly, I can assure you tonight, I will be advocating for matching that 104 or even trying to go higher than that in the Senate's fiscal year '26 budget this year. If we, if we are successful in increasing that amount, let's say to $104 per pupil minimum aid, matching last year's budget, that would provide roughly another $100,000 in Chapter 70 aid to Wakefield. We recognize that certainly does not meet all your, the fiscal challenges in the schools and public safety and DPW and everything else, but certainly every, every extra dollar helps. Just in closing, I wanted to mention I've also filed several new bills in the legislative session that just began in January. We just started a new two-year session and of, there are a few of them that are relevant to the conversation tonight, especially about school funding. One of those is Senate Bill 1912, Senate Docket 1912, which would, proposes to create a special blue ribbon commission, which would be charged with, once again, reexamining our school funding formula. Again, as I mentioned at the start of my remarks, this is the issue I've worked on ever since I was first elected, but things change and no formula is ever perfect and I believe it is time to, once again, reexamine it and look at what we need to do to make sure that all, all communities of all different types are receiving, you know, adequate funding to ensure high-quality schools. So we're going to be pushing for something like that, you know, to move forward this legislative session. A second bill I filed, SD 2243, would lower the cap on net school spending for charter school tuitions, which would have the effect of reducing the amount of money that many districts have to pay in charter school sending tuitions. For every student from Wakefield that attends Mystic Valley or another charter school, the town is required to send, the money follows the student, so they're required to send that. And this bill would look to make some changes to, to that in order to save money for, for sending districts. And then a third bill that I filed, which is SD 1237, would lower the local share of total statewide school funding and it would increase the state share. So that would be another way to shift more of the burden for funding public education from, you know, local municipalities to, to the state. So in closing, you know, I certainly will continue to work closely with Representative Lipic, Arabidian and Representative Wong and along with all of you, of course, and other Wakefield town officials to continue to address the town's fiscal and other challenges, you know, as best we can. So I'll stop there. I know, I'm sure we'll have questions and discussion. There was public comment a moment ago that brought up the, the so-called Fair Share Amendment or Millionaire's Tax and I'm, I'm happy to address that as well in terms of how the legislature and the governor have been using those funds absolutely as intended by the voters to support education and transportation. And Wakefield has been a significant beneficiary of those funds as well, including universal free school meals for all students, which has been a big plus for Wakefield students and families. But, and there are other ways you all benefiting as well, which we can speak to if you're interested.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm State Representative Caitlin Briggerabedian. Thank you so much for having us and for your work and service to the town of Wakefield. Thank you, WCAT, for the tremendous work you all do, making sure that the public stays informed. I wanted to really give you all the floor to ask your questions and provide your perspectives and I think the senator has given a very comprehensive overview of the support and the work that the delegation has done over a number of sessions to be in partnership with you, to think about ways to elevate your local priorities, working with the town manager and each of you, to think about ways that we can be present and mindful of what matters most in addition to Chapter 70 and unrestricted government aid. The earmarks that the senator mentioned are Chapter 90 funding for local infrastructure. I know that the delegation also has been pleased to bring to relevant department head attention grant funding opportunities and I've been pleased to see the, excuse me, the Wakefield Public Schools get a good number of grant funding through the, through state programs that we stand up. There's also been some successful economic development grants you all have received as well as a recent, for example, firefighter's equipment grant. And my office is frequently in contact with the town to make sure that folks are applying for those. So I'm going to pause there because I do really want to hear from you and give you time and to the chair's point, you have a lot on your agenda tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening, Representative Donna Wong. And we looked at Chapter 70 and we know that went up a little, but we also have to look at other things like Chapter 90. Chapter 90 last year was $655,000 and change. Proposed now is it's going to be $937,204. So the more money we get from, for other projects like Chapter 90, the more money we can use our local money for schools and education. The unrestricted, we gained a little more this, on the proposal than last year. Last year was 4 million, I think, 4,148,000. The proposed is 4,239, almost 100,000 more. So by doing that, we have more money to use in any way we want, whether we use it more for school or, or anything in the town. But we also have to remember as the state delegation works to get us more money, it can pass the House, it can pass the Senate, but we always have to watch out that the governor doesn't do any nine-seat cuts like she has before. And that's why I think that we have to work with everyone, you know, make in ways with the governor and, and try to get as much as we can. Thank you.
Originally, this was a request of Counselor Carney that we bring you folks in and I know that in the past we've had public participation where people said, where are our state reps? Can we get them to come in here? So since we have you, I think we're going to probably discuss a little bit more than just Chapter 70. I'll turn it over to Counselor Carney to kick us off here.
While you're doing it.
WCAT, can we show this? WCAT, can we show this on the TV here as well? The PowerPoint? Then you guys can see it. There you go.
Oh, thank you. I wanted to bring this issue up in the sense of bringing the reality to the state legislature of what's been happening in Wakefield with Arizona is concerned. And I don't think everybody's looked at the big picture. And I'm 78 years old. I'm the only person who was born and brought up in Wakefield, and I only bring that up from a standpoint, I've seen all the development. I've lived through it. And I remember we'd go from the Saugus line on Water Street, and I could ride a Husk, which we rode Husks back then, and rode a Husk from there to Salem Street, where the gas station we just discussed is, and not see anything. You know, fuel works, okay? And I'm not knocking the development. What I'm saying is the fact that I think you have to look at the big picture of how Wakefield might be different than other communities as it relates to 40A and 40B. This is the head of the lake, and basically, what we're showing here is the fact that we've had 506 additional units in that area from what was the old American Mutual coming down to North Ave. In the corner there, I put a picture of a hockey player, in the sense that the late William J. Lee, who the town hall was named after, and a gentleman by the name of Bernie O'Brien, basically proposed to put a hockey rink where the car dealership is at. So we saw the college, that's one of your favorite projects up there, Ed. That was supposed to be a hockey rink built there, but the neighborhood, which was all single-family at the time, with the exception of the Office Park on the other side of the road, as well as American Mutual, neighborhood bought it. They didn't want a hockey rink in the neighborhood. So now we have a car dealership, okay, and we have another 506 units. This is the area. I'm having a hard time seeing it myself. This is, have you got this? Yeah. This is the area, the upper right-hand corner is where my wife, Beverly, and I live. And there are six units on our street, College Park. And then when you go down Lowell Street, you have the units down near the intersection of Vernon Street, where you have eight units and another 30 units. Then you have 154, 158 Salem Street. That is the development that is down near Toby Lane. And then, of course, up near the Dolbya School, you basically have 404 units on American, another 30 units. And then you have the units on, yeah, I went over that. On Pitch Court, that's down off of Vernon Street. Next one slide. Here, we're up in our neighborhood, Jonathan, where we have six buildings, 301 units.
It's not my neighborhood.
It isn't?
No.
I apologize, sir. I thought you lived on.
No, now that is. Sorry, you were on a different slide.
Oh, okay. All right. I went one slide too far? All right.
That looks more familiar to me.
That was, we have 301 units. Let me go back to the last slide, Steve. And that is, yeah, Four Points, Chevronin, you have the Everly Apartments or what have you. You also have, which is not on here, you have the Point, Formal Point, which is another 159?
176.
176 units, yeah. Then we have the repurposing of Boundary Street, you know, which is, you know, with what happened with the railroad there, railroad, the west side of Wakefield's almost been cut off now with the railroad crossings or what have you. I'd be surprised if the people on the west side didn't want to succeed this, Stonem. Because the development there is impossible to get through. And with the traffic heading to the airport now from the head of the lake down North Avenue through this area, it's just going to be impossible to handle. Then you have the units down by MJ Fitness, where the, I used to call that the old shopping shop. Then you get out to the areas on Water Street and Omaha Street. Obviously, we have issues right there. We have two developments that just got canceled by the Board of Appeals. Now, all of this has happened. And then, of course, we go to Greenwood, and you have another 40 units up there. All of this has happened before we had 40A. So now, all of a sudden, we're struggling in the town with the issue of, how do we do this? How do we handle this? Okay? So between 40A and 40B and the fact that, you know, we actually haven't met the 10% under the 40B requirements, this town, if we have a housing crisis, it's not for the lack of, it's the fact we have too many. We have voluntarily done this over the years, and people are really concerned about what's going to happen to the town. We have an uprising in the Omaha Street area. If you drive through there, is every house has a sign on it. Every resident there is very, very upset about what's happening in their community. And I just want you folks to realize the enormity of this, how big it is in Wakefield. Now, I don't know about Winchester. I can't speak for Melrose. I can't speak for the other communities involved, but I know Wakefield has done it on its own. And therefore, when you pass these laws that require us to do so, it hurts the community, and we have no say in it. And the last thing I wanted to mention, and I think Steve's going to go into this, you know, more accurately and thoroughly, is the fact that we feel like we're being governed from the top down. The M, yeah, not MWR, right. The MAPC has gotten 6% funding in the last 11 years over 4% of the town has got. And they're coming down and telling us what to do. Later on this evening, we're going to be talking about a survey that I'm not sure any of us believe. In fact, people have questioned the accuracy of it, and they're doing surveys and then telling, okay, now you're eligible for them to go to you, I believe, where you appropriate money, where you're going to come down here and do what the Metropolitan Planning Council has decided the Wakefield people want to do. And we're dealing with those issues every day now. We're having required to agree to things before we can get any money. And that money has been, in my opinion, appears to be drained off of local aid. And we get less local aid, but now we're getting all these proposals from people with the bicyclists in Wakefield. They want to force us into having bike paths everywhere. And the MAPC is encouraging that, and they're putting requirements on our funding, just like the requirements they put on 40A. If you don't do it, you get penalized. And that's what bothers me, and that's what I'm hearing consistently with Wakefield. Thank you.
Are you going to, Steve?
Yeah, I can go. If you can switch to the other PowerPoint. Thank you. Thanks for coming. This one to talk a little about my favorite subject, local aid. You guys all know me as More Money Mayo, so this is one of the last times you have to listen to me.
We're going to miss it, Steve.
No, you're not going to miss it. So I wanted to go through a couple of things here. And I do appreciate the work that has been put on this, but you know me, I always want more money for the people of Wakefield. So I went back and looked at local aid history for the past 10 years, and basically, what it has increased year over year. And I'm looking at the net here, because the great thing about the cherry sheet when it comes out is that, you know, you have all the receipts on page one, but the real effect is when you go to page two and you see how items have, you know, some of the assessments of the community. So those are my figures going back through 10 years of net on the cherry sheet. And, you know, other than a few years, we did not really keep pace with inflation. Great in fiscal year '23, which was a great increase in Chapter 70. That was a wonderful year. I was thrilled. Not so much this year, and we've kind of talked about that a little bit before. So you can see where we've been over the last history of years. So there's a couple of things that come to mind when I do look at this. And I think that it has been difficult for the state, and with the exception of 2018, 2023, and '24, it's been difficult for the state to keep pace with inflation. And that's looking at the general inflation that we see around there. I'm thrilled that you mentioned charter schools, Senator Lewis, because the assessments have averaged over $1 million a year for Wakefield since 2017. That number's really going up. So that's a big issue in Wakefield. I know you hear it in Melrose, too, Kate, so I'm glad that you're looking at it. I do get the feeling, and this was evident at the Mass Municipal Convention as far as I was concerned, that there is a lot more emphasis in grants, and we do love getting the grants, but I like the direct aid much more because I am, as you know, More Money Male. So I started to play around with Chapter 70 a little bit. And one thing I've talked about for years is I've gone to many seminars on the formula, thought I almost had it once down, and just haven't, you know, there's a lot of variables in there. But I look at our surrounding communities, and for me, what is dispositive to me is that I think we are demographically pretty similar to Melrose, Reading, Stonem, less so with Linfield, less so with Saugus. So for me, I would think for some of these communities, our Chapter 70 per pupil aid should be about the same. So I looked at what our student count was in 2024. I did not go through how many were in younger grades versus high school. I just numbered students because I think it all came out, and I did for every community. So Melrose gets, my numbers, 3196 per pupil. Reading, 3250. Stonem, 3194. Saugus, an awful lot more, and maybe I'll throw them out as an outlier. Linfield, 2909. And, you know, God bless all of my brethren in these other communities. Wakefield is getting 2757, the lowest among us for per pupil aid, based on what I was looking at. So the town council has heard me talk about this for 10 years, and I know you guys have heard me talk about it for the same amount of time. So I played a game, and Kevin Gill and I look at this, and we kind of get a little bit angry and cranky about it. And I play, what if Wakefield received the same Chapter 70 per pupil as Linfield? We'd have 500,000 more. Melrose, 1.45 million more. Stonem, 1.47. Reading, 1.6 million more. I will tell you, a few years ago, the difference between Wakefield and Reading was about 3 million more in Chapter 78. We've got halfway there. I'd like to get to the other halfway there. So when we talk about, and Saugus, 9.8 million more, and I know that's not going to happen because that's way more than we do. I look at it, are we spending too much money? We are, what, Kevin, 20 million over? 20 million over our net required spending? Wakefield puts a lot of money into education. We value education, the highest among all these communities that are neighbors here. So as you, I'm thrilled to hear during your deliberations that you're looking at Chapter 70, you're looking at transportation on the circuit breaker, which is a huge issue, you're looking at the charter schools. So I think what I'm saying here is that, you know, a net increase, and I'm happy it goes up to, you know, I'll take $100,000 more. If you go up to $104 per student, I'm not going to say no. But it's very hard to manage our community, and any community, on an increase of what is at this point 1.6%, as Chairman Sullivan said over last year on the cherry sheet net, with everything else going up, particularly healthcare. We're looking at 10% increases on the GIC. And by the way, those that are in Maya are different. They're looking at more. So it is a tough, tough road to hoe. I thank you. I just wanted to throw some of those numbers out there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't want to take up too much time.
Any other questions for Councilors? Councilor Brose.
Thank you for coming in.
Can I just make just one point?
Sure.
Just, I appreciate all the numbers you threw up, and you could certainly send us. It is deceptive because the formula by design is not meant to provide the same amount per student to every community. That's the whole idea of the formula, is to take into account all the different characteristics, and not, the whole idea is not to be the same. I understand where you're coming from, when you feel like you're similarly situated.
Similarly, exactly.
I understand that, but I just want to make that clear for everyone. That whole point of the formula is not to provide, we wouldn't need a complicated formula if we were just providing the same amount.
Senator, I don't claim to understand that formula, but what is it about the formula that causes it to be lower?
Let me just finish, sorry, to finish. And then, just so you, just so folks know this, even though you're, if you go back to your previous slide, Steve?
Yeah.
And you pointed out that, you know, Stonem may receive more per student, Melrose does. Just so you know, and I represent these communities, so I know them very well, Stonem right now is facing an over $4 million budget gap to just maintain level services in their schools. So I can tell you, they are in a world of hurt and actually discussing trying to pass a Prop 2.5 override, which Stonem's never passed before. And I've represented Stonem for a long time. Representative Lipica Arabedian can speak even better than I can to Melrose. Her children are in the Melrose Public Schools. They're dealing with a multimillion-dollar deficit.
Also discussing a 2.5 override.
Override later this year, and tried to pass one last year. The delegation, Rep. Lipica Arabedian and I, along with our other colleagues, were in Malden this morning, meeting with the mayor and the city council there. They're dealing with major fiscal struggles, even though they do get, as a community with large numbers of low-income students, they do get more Chapter 78 per pupil, but that hasn't addressed and solved in any way their fiscal challenges either. And I can tell you, we hear from our colleagues every day with communities all across Massachusetts of different sizes and shapes, suburban, urban, rural, small, large, who are facing major, major fiscal challenges for a variety of reasons. It's not the same in every community, right? So I appreciate what you're saying, and I appreciate where you're coming from.
We're not too far off that.
And our job is not to represent all those communities. We represent Wakefield and advocate for you all, and I think we've tried to share tonight some of what we've done working together. But I did feel it was appropriate just to make a few points about it.
Senator, if things are tougher in other communities, I sympathize with them, but I'm simply trying to figure out, because I'm not a Chapter 70 expert, why is it that year after year we seem to get less? Is there something in the formula per pupil?
Well, just to be clear, you've not gotten less. As I pointed out in my remarks, right, where Wakefield was in fiscal year '19 was 6.4 million, and the community's at 8.9 million now, and in the governor's budget would be at 9.1 million.
Well, if the SOA is that much higher, 40% higher, why are we getting 1.66 net? I'm just trying to work the numbers.
So net is also a deceptive way of looking at this, right? Chapter 70 is on one side of the ledger. Net, the biggest charge that Wakefield has assessed is charter sending school tuitions, right? By far, that's the largest charge. And in Wakefield's case, that has gone up from 929,000 in fiscal year '19. In the governor's budget, we don't know the final number, but it's estimated at 1.7 million. That reflects how many students from Wakefield are choosing to go to the charter school. That's what that is. The enrollment has gone up. Students, families are making the choice, some of them. Wakefield has wonderful public schools. Most of the students attend the Wakefield schools. Some families, for whatever reason, they have that ability to make that choice. Mystic Valley, with all their problems and flaws, is still a public school, and they're choosing to send them there. That is, the money follows the student. That's why your nets, your charges have gone up. It's basically that. That's the only thing that's really changed that much. The MBTA charge has gone up, but more modestly. So that's what's changed in terms of the, you know, the charges back. On the side that the delegation works with our colleagues to try to do as best we can for the community, that's Chapter 70, and that's unrestricted aid. Those are basically by far the, you know, the line items that matter.
To Councilor Carney's points, too, if you would just consider, I mean, 40B has been on the books for decades. Boston's housing stock is 20%. They have no issue to even start with. It's harder in communities such as ours to reach that 10%. Guess what? We're bordering on it. We may lose it in 2031. You all know the way that it works because right now we'll get credit for our SHI units without changing the denominator. All those units get dumped in after the next census, so we might go from 10.2 back down under 10. Very, very difficult to obtain. And it's kind of remarkable to me that no one has ever looked at that, to try to modify that for a town that has such difficulty, or a suburb that has such difficulty making the 10% when other communities like Boston have 20%. It's just not even an issue to them. So I would throw that out for your consideration. Also, 40A, anytime we get a new law, and some people like to call it an unfunded mandate, I don't really look at it like that, but if we are being told we have to do things, and you know how much work we put in to getting the passage of that, that takes our town employees times. That takes our planners. times, that takes our planners' time. If we have to go around for a second round, it takes many of our volunteer time to try to get these things done. So there is a cost for any legislation that you pass, and I just hope that you'll consider that. Our employees are oftentimes working on these things that we are told to do and not always given the funding to do. Councilor Carney.
Getting back to the funding, it appears to lay for us, to our citizens, okay, that we get penalized because we have such a well-run town. We've got great credit writing, okay? And we passed an act of town meeting to build a new high school. We didn't use those other rights. We passed it and did it. But yet, we're still in good financial shape. But now, I'm concerned that, you're concerned about the other communities now because they're really stressed out. Well, we're not stressed out because we run a well-run community. We've had a good administrator who's brought us to this point. So that's what I'm hearing, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, Senator, but that's what I'm hearing.
Counselor, you're not being penalized in any way because of how the town is run. And you are a well-run community, and credit to Mr. Mayo and Town Council and the School Committee, and you absolutely are. You're not being penalized in any way for that. So I'm not sure what you're referring to. The state doesn't penalize you or give Wakefield less resources because of how the town is run.
Well, I thought you were making the comparison that they had to do 2.5 override.
All I was trying to say, the only point I was trying to make was that, notwithstanding some of the numbers that are on the screen there, that you would think if these communities were receiving more per pupil, which my first point was, that's not a valid way to compare. But even if you did compare that way, these are not communities that are, you know, sitting pretty and saying, oh, we're getting additional money, you know, from the state, all our problems are taken care of. They have all kinds of fiscal challenges, so it's not in any way solving those challenges.
In all due respect, I'm having a hard time comprehending how they're getting more money, all right? They're getting more money according to, you know, Steve's presentation here, but yet they're hurting more than us. I don't understand that. The fact that, you know, where we're in the situation we are is because over the last decades, we've run the town in a manner in which we could go to town meeting, get a new high school pass, okay? So we're not complaining about it. I was a supporter of that myself. The problem here is the fact that they're getting more money, but yet we're concerned about why they're not benefiting from that? Why is all of a sudden they aren't in the same situation we're in? They're not.
So just to be clear, yeah, Stonem gets less Chapter 70 money than Wakefield does, significantly less, okay? Melrose gets about the same in total. So it depends how you want to look at these numbers. Do you want to look at them based on per pupil? Do you want to look at how they've grown? Wakefield's seen a larger increase in Chapter 70 in the last several years than Reading has, right? You often compare yourself to Reading. Wakefield's seen a bigger increase.
Like I said, that got us halfway there.
And that was as a result of the Student Opportunity Act.
It was really good.
Has been pushing Wakefield up, and Reading was already relatively disproportionately high.
You know me, I want the other half. You know, you're used to it.
I understand, and you have to do that. But, you know, we need to...
I think he was before me. I think Councilor Dombrowski.
Jonathan was before me.
Thank you for coming in this evening. Appreciate seeing you all. I'm going to pose most of my questions, I guess, to you, Senator Lewis, just because you did the bulk of the presentation here. So you're mentioning that Stonem is in a world of hurt. You're saying that Melrose is in a multimillion dollar deficit. You're saying that they have all sorts of fiscal challenges. The legislature has failed them, and more specifically, the representatives who represent those communities haven't done their job because there's no reason why we should be having these overrides. I mean, Melrose has, to my recollection, to recent memory, they've had at least two overrides. If they're talking about a third, you know, that's... Stonem, to your point, I don't know that they've ever had an override, but they have. It's been a very long time. But these are all financial circumstances and crises that are falling on your watches. And that's really troubling. And while we've been fiscally prudent as to not go to our taxpayers and seek overrides, we also haven't, this committee or this council has decided that they're, in essence, have adopted this policy, over my objection, to basically tax to the max, really the full allowable by law. And that's probably one of the only reasons why we haven't had an override, because we have unsustainable budgeting happening right now. And there's no question that in the years to come, if we don't change the way in which we do things, given the pittance of the aid that we're getting from the state level, that we're going to find ourselves in a completely untenable position. There's just no way around that. You can run all the forecasts you want relative to this. I mean, a net of 1.66% year-over-year, which Steve had pulled up, understanding that that's still preliminary, but the fact we've been talking about that just shows, I think, an absolute and utter failure of leadership. And this notion that we continue to cede our authority, or have it ceded for us, to the state on any number of things, we're talking about grants, for instance. Grants are nice. Grants are one-time deals for the most part. Grants are helpful for certain projects. They're additive. But when we're looking at sustainable budgeting, and we're talking about our operating budget, it's very different. And, you know, a grant that is offered as a stick to be compliant with statewide mandates, 48 being one such example, that's not a way that we can budget around that. Senator, you had mentioned earlier the COVID dollars. We had the foresight to know that those dollars were not going to be a recurring revenue source. So we didn't budget, we didn't incorporate into our operational budget those dollars because that would have been improper, and it would have meant layoffs candidly. So we knew that. Those were one-shot infusions. But, you know, I look at this from the perspective, you mentioned the Student Opportunity Act. You mentioned the millionaire's tax, which, as you know, is quite controversial nonetheless. You were architect of both of those. And then I look at the headlines from yesterday's Globe, literally yesterday's Globe. We are, quote, "We are on a downward spiral. Mass school districts face another year of dire cuts." And then it goes in to speak specifically about the benefits of the policy with which you have been architects, and it says, "The bulk of that funding, however, has benefited about three dozen districts." Goes on to say, "More than 200 other districts meanwhile are receiving the lowest levels of increases allowed under state law, which local leaders contend aren't nearly enough to address their needs." You say to us that, you know, that your job is not to represent, quote-unquote, "those communities outside of the district," but instead, your job is to represent Wakefield. And when I look at things like the disproportionate way in which dollars are being driven away from our community and into other communities that candidly are, there are some communities that are oversaturated with dollars because the way in which those, Chapter 70 specifically, the way in which those dollars are being allocated are not through the same fiscal scrutiny that we have to use. And I know that for a fact because I've spoken to a lot of folks in some of those beneficiary communities, and they've said, "We're flush with cash. We have to figure out how to spend it." Meanwhile, places like Wakefield don't have that privilege. And then ultimately, you know, we're finding ourselves in a situation where, how do we keep things afloat? How do we continue to be the AAA-rated community that we are? How do we do that when we don't have the support of the state delegation relative to this? And it's significant. You know, so as much as you want to say there's the Student Opportunity Act, I just want to say the millionaire's tax, I don't know how much more you can take without us getting it back because, as you said, even after all of that, look at where your communities are that you represent, and I'll look at specifically at your district, Senator, because it's the largest of them, and think about that. Each of those communities, you're saying, are in a world of hurt right now. So how is that effective leadership, or more significantly, how is that successful leadership? Because we're in a worse position now. That's really troubling. And I know that I'm not alone in saying this. You know, I've communicated with leaders in other municipalities as well. I know their position on that. I know you've heard some of the other leaders' positions relative to this. You know, this Chapter 70 formula is candidly as cryptic a formula as the legislature is secretive because there's no rhyme or reason to it. We're not that different than Reading. Let's face it, we're very comparable to Reading. We're not that different than Stonem, for that matter. And I think Steve makes an excellent point when he shows the great disparity between the cost per pupil, which does matter. That's a really significant thing. And the answer isn't to just eliminate school choice. And so, you know, it troubles me to hear the presentation tonight, but then to look at the reality as it presents itself. And I mean, citing the Globe just yesterday to talk about the fact that we're in a downward spiral, this is an issue across the state, and there just hasn't been that leadership role to Chapter 70 or education funding, you know, specifically.
So let me ask you a question, Councilor Dombrowski. Would you support making changes to Proposition 2.5? Should we be doing away with it or raising Prop 2.5 to have a higher cap than 2.5%? Because that's fundamentally, that's the root cause of most of these fiscal struggles.
Oh, it's most, certainly it's not. So what you're basically saying is, should we turn this bigot back on so that we can take more tax dollars at the state level is what you're asking?
So what I'm saying is, when the inflation rate's been running well ahead of 2.5%, how is any municipality going to be able to keep up? When the costs have been running far ahead of its revenue stream?
The exact same way that every household does, by living within your means. And that's something that the state has failed to do. And that's where the distinction lies.
The state has to run a balanced budget every year. We're not the federal government. We have to live within our means. We have to live within whatever tax revenue we receive.
But what you're doing, though, is not living within your means because you're continuing to find ways in which you can try to capture more tax revenue to support funding or spending that is well beyond what is going to be sustainable.
The only thing that's been added is the Fair Share Amendment, which asks households making more than $1 million a year to pay 4% additional income tax. Every one of those dollars that the state has been receiving, which, by the way, that has exceeded expectations, the millionaire's tax, every one of those dollars has gone back into education and transportation. That is how we're providing free school meals for Wakefield students, saving the average family $1,000 a year because they don't have to provide meals for their kids. That's why we're able to provide the Chapter 90 amounts that Representative Wong mentioned.
Support our early education and childcare ecosystem, which is critical for working parents.
That's how we're helping families afford higher education.
That is not how you're able to do that. You're able to do that by having a budget that prioritizes the things that matter most to the residents here. We have outmigrations.
So do residents in Wakefield not need early education and childcare for their children? Do they not send their children to college and try to afford that? Are they not using public transportation? Do they use the commuter rail or the buses or the orange line to get to work?
Not really.
Oh, they don't?
Not the 137.
Maybe you don't represent the same constituents that I represent, Councilor Dombrowski.
I'll say no. From the buses, no. From commuter rail, yeah, certainly. But I think what I'm trying to really establish here is the fact that you're saying, okay, we're able to fund these things. These things are able to be funded in different ways. There's the offset, which you're not taking into effect if we're talking about net, and that's the outmigration, too. The dollars that have left this state as a result of that, because it's not just households earning a million a year, it's also businesses, too, and you understand that. A lot of small businesses were impacted by that. I'm not looking to get into a debate about that.
Yeah, I'm happy to take that offline, and we can debate that. But I think we had that debate, and I think you know you lost because the voters of Massachusetts voted for that several years ago, so they have spoken on that.
Okay, well, I'm not looking to bring up campaigns, certainly, because that's not the purpose here.
Yet you are bringing that up, but that's okay.
Respectfully, Senator, you had mentioned the millionaire's tax in your remarks, and I was commenting on that. So what I'm saying, though, is that we are on a crash course at the state level where we are continuing to try to scramble, our legislature is continuing to try to scramble to find more ways in which to try to generate revenue, usually on the backs of the taxpayers. And a case in point, this idea of, oh, well, we'll allow municipalities to be able to have their own local tax, right? That was the discussion that was brought up last session. It's now being introduced again. That doesn't help our residents because all it does is enable us to tax them more. That's not the way out of this. And so I really encourage you to really think about, you're talking about balanced budgets and the like, I really encourage you to think about, okay, where are the priorities here? Because to balance a budget, if you're having to try to pull from such extreme resources, you know, and other sources, then maybe that that's not the way to do it. Maybe it's you have to think about, okay, how are we spending at the state level? And also, how are we designating the dollars from the state level to the local level? Because right now, local aid is quite unimpressive. And I can tell you that we in Wakefield can spend a dollar a heck of a lot better than you can on Beacon Hill. And so the more that we have to do that at the local level, and I think that's true of most communities, so I really encourage you to think about that. Instead of this kind of, these grander plans of, at the state level, state mandates, state requirements, state grants, and the like, give us the dollars. We know how to direct them better than anyone of your colleagues do. So I really encourage you to think about that, too.
Thank you very much for your feedback.
Well, and I thank you for taking the time tonight. Thank you.
Councilor Chay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, just, I would love to know who those communities are that feel that they're flush with cash. I have yet to talk to any of them through the MMA, but would love to know what they're doing, if you want to give us those names.
We can talk offline, because I'll give you a couple of committees.
Absolutely.
I'm talking to the schools specifically. Yeah.
But I want to bring this really down to some sort of specifics because I think we've talked a lot about concepts, and I, you know, a budget is a concept document, but there are also places where there are real dollars. And I think that, you know, those of us that sort of work in this space, like, I look at this list here and say, yes, there's a reason there's variability there. The formula does vary based on pupil characteristics around English language learners, around low-income students, and so there's variability that makes sense. But I do think as we look at the fiscal year 2026 budget, I think there are some specific things that I would ask to be on your radar screen. One is looking at the minimum aid increase that was proposed by the governor of $75. Senator Lewis, you rightly pointed out that that was $104, thanks to the work of the legislature last year. I would echo the request that that be at that minimum, if not higher. And I would say one of the benefits of the Fair Share Amendment is that the revenue has come in greater than we expected, and I think the legislature in the first year of that program was appropriately conservative on how much you budgeted for in terms of what you'd spend out of that. But I think we've seen that there's more room there, and so to the extent that that can be used specifically to make sure that we go above the increases that we've seen, both directly, but also thinking about sort of the charter school issue, I think there's a lot of opportunity there that would have a meaningful impact on communities like Wakefield and others. I appreciate you bringing up looking at the formula as well. It's interesting, you know, 2019 was pre-pandemic. The world changed a lot since then, and so I would agree that, given the number of communities, including Wakefield, that now receive the minimum aid increases, that does need to be looked at, and so I'm glad that's something that you filed, Senator Lewis, and hope that that gets consideration in both chambers and ultimately approved by the governor so that we can begin the hard work of looking at this complex formula and making sure that it meets our needs. Finally, UGA, unrestricted general government aid. I wanted to talk a little bit about that. You know, over the last several years, the model that the governor and the legislature have followed has been tying the increase in UGA to the consensus revenue forecast increase, which in years where the consensus revenue forecast shortchanged revenue, meant that the state actually pulled in a much higher increase than was given out to communities in unrestricted government aid. While that was made up for a little bit last year in fiscal year 2025, you know, we still see, sort of, if you look over a period of time, I think we still see a net gap between sort of state revenue forecasts and where the UGA percentages were. Obviously, we're in a time where the state revenue forecasts are lower than they were a few years ago because of macroeconomic conditions. And so I recognize that, you know, the ask here is one that is fiscally challenging, but it is an important ask because, again, you know, regardless of what's happening with other sources, you know, there's a certain minimum increase to our costs, and our revenue is by definition constrained by Prop 2.5. So again, the request would be, as we go through the next several months, and as you take the governor's budget as a starting point, and, you know, ultimately get us to something that will pass both chambers and bear the governor's signature before July, hopefully before July 1st, would ask that these be taken into consideration as you go through the process. And thank you for coming here tonight and for the great work that the three of you do.
Councilor Butler.
You know, I think, I'll, you know, echo, I think what many of my councilors have said. I think the thing that I struggle with is, you know, thinking about, we look at, we often put up those six towns because they're next to us. But, you know, and not to quote from last night's Super Bowl, but Linfield and Reading, they're not like us. Like, they're richer, they're bigger, or Linfield's much smaller, Linfield's much richer, though Reading is much richer. Stonem is us. Like, you could merge us. Like, you could merge us and it would pretty much, the demographics would all stay the same. I think my frustration, and this probably goes to more you, Senator Lewis, is if you look at that overall, the, the similar communities throughout Massachusetts, so similarly demographically, you know, make somewhere between 50 and 70 grand a year, you know, have 22,000 to 32,000 people. The two bottom names on that list for Chapter 70 funding are Stonem and then us. And then there's a whole host of towns in the five figures. And by the way, you said Melrose gets sort of the same. 13 million isn't nine. So like, that's, Melrose gets a lot more in Chapter 70, bigger population, bigger, you know. But that is sort of my pushback. And I think what we've all, like, you, you went through, like, oh, you are getting much more than you did in 2019. I don't think any of us are arguing about the amount that we've received. I think we're arguing about that what we are getting additionally as compared to our brethren. And so, yes, Reading is at a ridiculous Chapter 70 number, and I think Steve's mentioned that. That's because they screwed up the formula a long time ago, so they'll, we'll eventually catch up to them. But, yeah, like, Linfield, like, there's no reason on earth why we should be getting less per pupil than Linfield, unless they've got some very sketchy, like, demographic things going on in their, in their school system, you know, box checking. But yes, I mean, I think all of these are fine. It really is about thinking about us, and again, and this to the representatives, this is where we always get a little uncomfortable because we're like, well, you're our representatives, but you're really, like, you're really two other towns' representatives. I mean, yes, you've got half of us each, so it's, but we're an, we, you know, politically, we should be an afterthought to you or second, second in the running of your two, over the two primary towns. So I think probably most of us tend to address Senator Lewis because he's, you know, he's stuck with us. So I guess from my standpoint is, let's try and make sure that we're not just looking at our neighbors, that we're looking at the Mansfields, at the Marshfields, at the Norwoods. Those are the towns who were like the Eastons, and they're getting a lot more in Chapter 70. So I don't know what the folks down on the South Shore are doing right, but it, it does seem like they're getting a disproportionate, and they're not, they're generally not more diverse than us, and that, that's, you know, hard to do.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's, that's correct. We can look, we'd have to look at all the numbers. I'm not sure that, that's accurate at all, disrespectfully, but.
No, no, that's fine.
That is, that can, certainly many of those communities.
Well, that's from the fiscal '26 numbers, from the like.
Don't feel like, like, you know, they feel like they should get more Chapter 70, too.
Yeah, everybody does.
Very few communities I've ever met with, and I've traveled the state in my role sharing the education committee, have ever said that, you know, we get too much Chapter 70 or don't get enough. But just to, just one thing you said that I just have to speak on behalf of my colleagues. I, I certainly, I can say for, with Representative Libic-Arabian, because we also represent Melrose and Malden together.
Yeah.
The amount of effort that she puts into representing Wakefield, and certainly, you know, just because she happens to live in Melrose, and because I happen to live in another community, does not, does not in any way.
It has nothing to do with living where you live.
Does not in any way.
It has to do with that she has all of Melrose and half of here, and he has all of Saugus and half of here.
It doesn't make any difference whatsoever.
But you don't need, they don't need us to win, is what the, is the key point.
But the, the whole concept of Chapter 70 is that it is a formula, so.
Oh, yeah, no, that I'm, I'm not disputing that, but it.
There are no chips that we're playing when we go to Beacon Hill to have the numbers come out like they come out.
No, and I think this is clearly first.
There's a more fundamental point. You're suggesting because.
It's a cumulative advantage issue.
So a person might represent, you know, one half and/or another half, that in some ways we're, they're less committed to that community or less working on behalf of that community. And I just want to make sure everybody knows and the public knows, nothing could be further from the truth. This, these two, you know, fine colleagues here, and the three of us as a delegation, work closely together, and everything we do is for the benefit of Wakefield. We don't say it's for this particular precinct or that precinct because that's the one I happen to represent or not represent. So I just want to be very clear about that, too.
No, 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 and I'm, I'm, I'm just speaking like, I'm the, I'm the abrupt one in the group.
We have all the people in the room, and we have the public watching. I just want to be clear about that tonight.
Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Chairman McLean. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I actually was going to start my comments by thanking you all for how many events you come to in Wakefield. I mean, I'm retired, and I try to make as many as I can. You guys come to at least as many as I do, if not more. So I do thank you for the time and effort that you do spend physically coming into Wakefield and attending a lot of our events. My question is completely different from what we were talking about tonight, and it has to do with Affordable Housing Trust Fund funding. We are not a CPA community. And I did a little research before tonight's meeting, and I think Senator Lewis is, in your district, I think Winchester and Stonem are CPAs, but I don't know that there's any other towns in, in your district that are. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think Saugus is a CPA, Community Preservation Act community, and I don't think Melrose is.
It's not.
So we are not either.
Malden is as well.
Malden is, that's right. You are, that's right. And you represent a slither of Malden, too. Yeah. So we had 700, we have an Affordable Housing Trust Fund now. We had $760,000 in, I'll call it seed money, when we created the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and then we put another $200,000 in ARPA funds, in, in ARPA funds in there. So we're sitting just shy of a million. But we're not going to become a CPA community anytime soon. This town voted on it back in 2001, and overwhelmingly rejected it, and it's never been brought up again. And I'm not proposing to bring that up now, especially with the fiscal constraints that we have. But what, thinking outside the box, what other sources of funding can municipalities who are not CPAs use in order to fund their Affordable Housing Trust Fund? I mean, right now, we're providing renters assistance, and I'm hoping down the road we'll be able to provide assistance with people with closing costs. And maybe eventually we can build some town-owned property down the road that's affordable housing. But what is Melrose and Saugus and the other municipalities in your district, Senator? What have they been doing to try to fund their Affordable Housing Trust Fund? Because it's one thing to have it on paper, but if there's no money in it, then it doesn't serve any purpose for the public.
I do just want to commend you specifically, Counselor Vincent, on the work that you've done on this topic. I think the first time we ever had a conversation, it included your attention on this matter. So kudos to you and to your colleagues and to the town for really leading on this and building that, that amount of money up over time. I don't have an immediate answer for you. Certainly, we could go look at what HLC, all the grant funding that they put out. I know you all have, have been tremendous leaders in receiving some of the Housing Choice Awards. I'm not familiar with whether or not the eligibility could include, you know, something in this nature, but it might be something to bring to the secretary's attention, for example, to see if that is something they could consider expanding. The purposes used for some of that funding that they put out on their one-stop, you know, shop for all municipalities to look into. It's just a thought off the top of my head.
All right, thank you. As you probably know, the majority of communities are now part of the Community Preservation Act.
Yes.
Malden voted on it, I think it was maybe four years ago now, so it wasn't that long. Winchester actually just voted on it last year.
I think it's 200, I think it was 370 something.
Yeah, and they was, they had voted on it.
2001, yeah.
They had voted on it about 20 years ago. So maybe similar to Wakefield, Council of Vincent, and had not supported it. So, but they came back this time around, folks were educated in the community about the benefits of the CPA. For those who don't know, there's a state match, so it does require an additional cert tax and property taxes. You get to set that, but then there's a state match that, that the town would receive. And that, so that has been a good source of funding for a lot of those municipalities, right? For open space, for affordable housing, and historic preservation is the third piece of that. So I, you know, I do put out there, that could be a conversation, you know, to, to be had in the community.
Yeah, because the last discussion was.
And again, there are still communities who are voting on it and adopting it and having success, you know, with it. And there are always conversations in the state legislature about increasing the state match, and we've done several things in the last, you know, number of years to increase the state match. So it has fluctuated over time.
Sure.
But it, but we've increased it. So that, you know, that has been, that has been certainly one of the primary vehicles. Another idea that's out there, I suspect there will be people in the room who, who don't support this, and some members of the public, but there is a conversation about having a, a transfer fee, essentially a local option transfer fee on high-end real estate sales. So that is a debate that has been happening. There are a number of communities that have petitioned the state legislature to give them the option to implement a real estate transfer fee. The legislature and the governor haven't approved those yet, and there was a major housing bill that we passed last year. This was debated but not included. But if you all felt that's a tool that Wakefield would want to have, again, it would be local option, you would decide if you wanted to implement that within certain parameters, and then on the sales of properties above a certain threshold, that, then that fee would go into an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. That's an idea that's, that's certainly out there.
Thank you. And then the last question I have, and I'm going to ask it publicly because then you can't say no, is we're having a rededication of our Soldiers and Sellers Memorial on May 31st of this year from 12 to 4:00. The main part of the rededication will be about 2:45 to 4:00. Wakefield would be honored if you could do a joint proclamation from the State Senate and the State House, and I can work with you and your staff on what to word in there and whatnot. But if we could have a joint proclamation that we could invite you all and have you present at the ceremony, we'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Can you just, what day of the week is this? Is this a weekend?
Yeah, May 31st, Saturday.
Saturday. Thank you.
Counselor Butler.
So I want to reiterate, thank you all for coming. It's been a while, so I'm glad that you guys were able to come. And I think we talked a lot about the current budget, FY '26 budget. I think the call, like it's always been, is we would love more money. So Jonathan had some really great, Counselor Chine had some really great suggestions, and we just hope it's an ongoing conversation as the budget comes to the House in April and then to you, Senator, in May. I just want to touch on briefly on some stuff because I, I don't think we've also thanked you of some of the good stuff you've done, so I just want to reiterate that. So the kids' meals, like, I know our school committee and asked, wrote you a joint letter about that, and I know it's like a priority, and I just want to say, like, I hear every day that that is a really great thing that the state of Massachusetts did to join other states, so thank you about that. Community college, so you glossed over it, like, kids under 26, go to community college for free. Like, a former colleague of ours' child is using this. This is like, great. And I think as you get more examples, like, no, you did a really good thing, and for all of us that did support the, the fair share amendment and worked on it for a long time, that's the positive that we wanted to see with that. So I just wanted to just highlight that. Really appreciate the grants that you do. Yes, it is not free cash, but you, Rep Wong and Senator Lewis, you're at Inspire Cafe. If there's ever a model of what economic development can look like in, throughout the state, like, please share that example, because that is probably in my eight years on the council now, one of the best things I've done, other than the community garden, which is also another grant that we got. So I appreciate grants. You know, Steve and his team are always looking out about getting us more money, and I think we've done some really creative, great stuff with them. So on that, just one little thing, I think, as we talk about, of ways to kind of protect what we've done. So I'm just getting really nervous. I don't want to have a political debate, but some of these things coming out of the federal government, I just want to make sure that we're protecting people in, in Massachusetts and things that we've done. For instance, we have a bylaw that ban plastic bags and plastic straws. I don't want that undone. And so whatever you guys can do at the state level to kind of protect and know that people's jobs are being affected and all this, this, like, I hear from people pretty regularly of like, kind of the, the uneasiness, and, you know, we, we tell people to go talk to our congressional delegation, but I think for you guys to think about what the state can do to help people, because people are going to need more resources. So our food pantry in the past year has seen a 30% increase. You know, if cuts, if cuts do come to the food pantry, like, and, and Steve was working on a list of federal grants and federal funds that potentially. So I encourage you to like, you know, talk to Steve and talk to your other town administrators and mayors, because that, that's real money that's going to go away, and the state is somehow going to have to help us. So just want to keep that on your radar as well. Federal employees, back to Chairman.
Let's not go there. Vanishing breed. Any other questions, comments from the counselors? Seeing none, I'd like to thank all three of you for all you do for Wakefield and to second what Counselor Vincent said, all the times we've all been together at various functions. We really appreciate you showing up in the legislature and showing up right here. And thank you for all that you do. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Item B, I believe, is Open Space and Recreation Plan.
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone.
Good evening. My name is Ethan Fleming. I'm the conservation agent for the town of Wakefield, and I'm with Jim Luciani, the chair of the Conservation Commission. So we are looking for your support for the 2024-2023 Open Space and Recreation Plan. It received conditional approval March of last year from the state. The conditional approval being a few edits that they provided to the consultants that had been addressed and added to the plan. The last things needed for submission is new support from the Conservation Commission and from the town council. The Conservation Commission had issued a new letter of support last week, so all we need is that support from the counselors. I know this has come your way before, so I'd be happy to give you as much or as little detail as you'd like. I've only picked this up recently myself, but there's been very experienced people and groups who have been working on this to start of the plan. And I'd like to open the floor to you guys, to your thoughts, questions, or where you stand with this plan.
Thank you, Ethan. And I agree with you, we have seen it before, so it's not new to us. So I would open the floor to questions from counselors. Counselor Chine?
Thank you. Just very briefly, I really want to thank the two of you and, and all of the people that you're, you're representing here today for the work on this. I, I was impressed with the draft of the plan that we saw several months ago. Obviously, since then, you know, read through the final version, see that, you know, the feedback you've gotten from this council and, and from the state have been taken into account and reflected. I, I think it's a great document and a good resource, and I certainly am supportive of moving forward with the letter of support.
Any other questions from counselors? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chairman McLean. As you know, Mr. Luciani, I'm a big supporter of the Conservation Commission. I supported you having, getting a full-time agent last year when we were talking about the budget, and I spoke on your behalf at town meeting. I still have a lot of concerns about this, and frankly, you did not answer a lot of the question, legal questions that I raised last summer. When I look at the chain of command for this project, you have the Conservation Commission, then you had an Open Space and Recreation Subcommittee, who last met January of 2024, and then you had the Horsley-Witten Group, which was the consultant. In my opinion, I think the, the problem is that there was too much responsibility undertaken by the consultant and not as much oversight by the Conservation Commission and your Subcommittee. The document was drafted, and then the consultant submitted the initial draft last March of 2024 to the state OSRP. Who authorized the consultant? Who gave the consultant the legal authority to submit a draft plan which led to conditional approval to the state on Wakefield's behalf? Because I've looked at your meeting minutes, I never saw the Conservation Commission vote to authorize the consultant to do that. And I've looked at the Open Space and Recreation Subcommittee meetings, and I haven't seen that they authorized the consultant to submit a legal document to the state. So who authorized that? I'm not sure. I, I would say, wouldn't it have been the Subcommittee? Well, I didn't see that. And if they did, do you know who Melissa Cryan is?
No.
You know who, she's actually the DCR, the Massachusetts person who handles Open Space and Recreation Plans. And I called her last week.
Yeah.
And I asked her, and she said, it has happened before, where the consultant submitted it on behalf of the municipality, but it's when the municipality has specifically authorized them to do so. And I didn't see any evidence of that. And the reason that concerns me is because I think the quality of the document is lacking. And right now, what we have is that conditional approval was given last March, which means the seven-year clock for this plan is now one year in. And in that plan that was submitted by the consultant, the Conservation Commission has the authority to assign 10 responsibilities to the town administrator and impose deadlines, which in my opinion, he doesn't have any, you don't have any legal authority whatsoever to impose upon him. Now, that's the conditional one that went in. When you came before us in July, and once again, you came before us months after you went before, after you, or your consultant submitted the plan to the state. I know I specifically brought up that you had errors inherent concerning ownership of school property and the management of school property. Now, I will thank you for correcting the ownership component of that. I checked the plan, and it does say that the Town Council is the owner of school property. However, in Appendix 3, pages 3 and 4, Appendix C, pages 3 and 4, you still list the school department as the managers for not just the seven public schools, but you also list the school department as the manager of the Westwood School, the Little Red Schoolhouse, the Franklin School, and something called the Mill River Floodplain. Now, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask you, does the school department manage the Little Red Schoolhouse, the Franklin School, or the Mill River Floodplain?
They do not.
Have they ever managed those since the charter was changed in 2000?
The charter was changed, no.
Okay. Can you explain why that continued? I mean, this was specifically brought to your attention last July. Why is that still in there?
Yeah. I have to get an answer for you. I didn't really do, it went onto a Subcommittee, which, so I didn't do too much with it. But I'm sure we come up with the reason.
The other one that, and I'll use this one last, and this is the one that concerned me the most about this plan, is Section 9 of the plan, which is called the Seven-Year Action Plan, says two important things. The following plan is designed to implement the goals and objectives outlined in Section A8 and address the needs identified in Section 7. And then it says the Conservation Commission will be responsible for overseeing the management and implementation of the action plan. Now, when you all were before us, not you either, but when you all were before us last summer, we brought up, many of us, our concerns that you assigned, or you would be overseeing 10 responsibilities assigned to the town administrator with deadlines imposed upon him, including one for hiring an assistant recreation director. Now, to your credit, you have reduced that number from seven to three, but you continue to have three in there. Hiring an assistant recreation director, you also have in there holding regular, all committee meetings once a year with all representatives of the town boards and committees that have an interest in open space, and then you have a third one in there. Well, since you retain those three, that tells me they're very important to you, I understand that, and that you must believe that you have the legal authority to assign work to the town administrator and to impose deadlines upon him. I don't happen to agree with you, but to prepare for this meeting, I review the applicable laws and regulations. Specifically, I review Chapter 40 Massachusetts General Law, Section 8C, which is the Conservation Commission established by a town. I didn't see that authority in there. I checked Wakefield Bylaw, Section 5.6, which is Conservation Commission. Didn't see you have the authority there. Checked Wakefield Bylaw, 9-1, which is deals with Conservation Commission. Didn't see the authority in there. I did look at Wakefield Charter, Part 4, which deals with the town administrator, and Section 3.2, which is Town Council, and I clearly saw that we have the authority to impose responsibilities upon the town administrator and also to impose, you know, deadlines with him. And then I thought, okay. So I guess my first question to you is, I'm prepared now, I have my pen in my hand. What legal authority does the Conservation Commission have to assign tasks to the town administrator, especially a task to hire an assistant recreation director and then to give him a deadline?
I don't have, I don't know, I don't know where that came from.
But your letter of support?
I know that the act that we talked about talks about the, what we can, can and can't do, and I know that's not in there, but there is authority to do something in there.
Well, like I said, we, this was raised with the Conservation Commission and with the Open Space and Recreation Subcommittee Chair last summer.
Yeah.
So when I saw this in here, that's what led me to do my additional research.
Yeah.
And come back to you tonight and say, I don't see what legal authority you have. Now, the other option is maybe you are going to come in and ask us to cede or delegate our authority to you. But I watched your meeting the other night, and I didn't hear that come up. And frankly, if you did ask that, I wouldn't agree, because I think that's bad precedent and creates a slippery slope. Whereas if we delegate to you the ability to task him with responsibilities, and then the other 30 boards, commissions, and committees in town, and ask us to, for that authority on one, he suddenly has 30 different tasks from 30 different people who are trying to supervise.
I understand your point. It doesn't, that doesn't make any sense. I understand that.
And since you got conditional approval last March.
Right.
And next month is one year later.
Yeah.
Did the Conservation Commission actually intend to go to the town administrator next month and ask him if he held these meetings with the representatives of all towns and boards and committees? Because his one-year deadline would be next month. So did you plan to go to him and ask him if he had achieved the responsibility you gave to him and the deadline you imposed upon him?
I understand your concern with this. While the Conservation Commission has, is delegated to implement this plan, it's just a plan that offers guidance and goals and objectives in regards to open space. It doesn't inherently mean these will be done, it's just potential to be done in the future.
Yeah, I'm not going to agree with you on that. Words matter, and I'm looking at the words that are in Section 9, Seven-Year Action Plan, and I don't see this that way. I do not read this that way. And it was brought to the Conservation Commission's attention in July, and as the owners of the document, they and the consultant could have put clear language in here, that this was just aspirational, this was just goals. You could have literally just changed Town Administrator to something else, or come and asked us if we were willing to agree with you to put that in there, but you didn't do that. And here's the quandary now. If we don't issue you a letter of support, which I am not going to vote in favor of, then what happens is the conditional approval stays in effect, which is worse than the current draft, because the conditional approval is the one where you're asking him with 10 different responsibilities, and at least now you're only asking for three, otherwise you don't have legal authority for any of them, in my opinion. So I'm really at a, I'm at a loss for what to do tonight, because I will not support, I will not give you a letter of support, and you won't get my vote on that. But then, I don't know how the state's going to handle the fact that you're already in conditional approval for one year of the seven years. And I just, I'm just very disappointed that the time that many of us on this council took last summer to give you, we cited the sections of the charter that were applicable, and the fact that you couldn't change these and you continue assert authority over the town administrator is very troubling to me. That's all I have, Chairman McLean.
Counselor Dombrowski, you had a hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for coming before us tonight and sitting through a long meeting so far. I recognize this is a 329-page document, and I know, and I note that Counselor Vincent has raised a lot of legitimate concerns that I appreciate him raising to you now, and I think you can probably take them back to the Conservation Commission and look through it some more. So I might suggest that, just in the interest of time, I don't know that we can move beyond, given the extent of the concerns that have been raised by Counselor Vincent. So I might suggest that we allow the Conservation Commission some time to go through, take into account what was raised, and then come back to us at a future meeting in the near I feel like otherwise, we're just kind of talking the abstract, because there were a number of things that clearly have to be changed based upon what was represented. So I don't know that it would be a productive conversation.
Yeah, I don't want to cut it short either, in the sense that this has been to us, now it's back to us. If this was as important as it is to seek grants, why did it sit fallow for all that time when Counselor Carney asked that somebody come back to us in August, and that didn't happen? Counselor Chines, I think at one point was asking me, what's going on with the report? And I kind of said, what do I know? I'm not doing the report. You know, so we have been pursuing this, and now I am more concerned, I think, as Counselor Vincent is, on these very, very many things that are listed as things that will be done. I mean, I don't read it as necessarily just aspirational, including, you know, a pocket park a year, including, you know, we're going to hire somebody out of undisclosed and unnamed program fees that are, I guess, they're not the program fees we have right now that are paying for recreation, right? So they have to come from somewhere else. We don't have any information on that. So I consider this to be, you know, when you heard me talking to the state reps, I mean, if they give us a law like 48, we've got to spend a lot of time on it, our employees have to spend a lot of time on it. There's a lot of time spent in here.
Yeah.
You know, that the town administrator, whoever that may be at some point in the future, will then do an annual meeting, you know, of all committees, and there will be another meeting of the ZBA and the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission. Not terrible ideas, but an awful lot of work. To me, in those pages 68 to 78, that whole graphic is a bit much. And generally, I, you know, the fact that it is so long and it ties in with, you know, MP 2050, and, you know, which I may not necessarily agree with, and things that have been created by the MAPC that I may not agree with.
Yeah.
You know, I, that's just my opinion. I don't want to cut the conversation short. I see that we may not be, we may not be going anywhere tonight, but I have more than just the concerns that Counselor Vincent stated. Counselor Vincent?
Thank you.
Let me go with Counselor Chines.
Thank you.
Hasn't been heard yet.
Well, I have been, but I'm happy to speak again.
Well, we'll get to both of you, it's okay.
I think we've run into this trap on the council when we talk about planning documents of sort of, you know, we're letting the perfect be the enemy of the good, and there are things we need to correct in here, absolutely. I think, you know, the management of some of the properties that Counselor Vincent pointed out, I mean, that is a, you know, a thing that, you know, should be adjusted, because it is a factual thing that needs to be corrected. But, you know, as I'm looking at Section 9, I mean, the first sentence says, this is intended to serve as a guide for future planning efforts. And I think when we think about planning, I think about planning as a funnel, right? You start with a vision, you then set goals, you then get to specifics. At every point in time during that process, there's a certain winnowing down that happens. We can't ever do everything, right? We had the same discussion with the pedestrian and bike master plan. We're having this discussion now. This is really intended, from my perspective, to be a guidepost that then we, as the council, but also other bodies, including Town Meeting, then have to go through and set priorities in certain areas. This is meant to provide direction, this is meant to provide a guidepost of the things that we want to continue to look at. It is not meant to be the final document that binds the town administrator, or us, or Town Meeting, or anyone else. Those bodies still have discretionary authority over the things that they have authority for in the charter. And so I just, I worry about, you know, I worry that we're spinning our wheels on good work that has been done without really seeing, no pun intended for this, the forest for the trees in terms of a plan that does offer, I think, a legitimate and solid and appropriate guidepost for where we go from here in terms of protecting open space. So, you know, if the council's not ready to look at it today, that's fine, but I do worry that we are, we are spinning our wheels on things that should not be as complicated as we are making them out to be.
We may disagree on the good work that has been done, but we don't need to beat upon that too much. Is a Rundel Ave in here?
I'm sorry, what?
A Rundel Ave, is that listed in here?
I'm not sure, I could.
Yeah, I mean, I think citizens have also looked at this and have pointed out to us that there may be some things that are missing. We're doing all properties, it should be all properties. Question is, who's setting the trap? I mean, if there's a trap to be had here, you know, and maybe that, you know, I look at this and I say, there's everything here under the, other than the kitchen sink, right? And, you know, it's tying in all these programs and all these MAPC-related situations that I may have voted against and not agree with. You know, and I may be in the minority on that. I don't have a problem being in the minority, you all know that. But certainly, I don't consider this to be purely aspirational good work, and I don't think it's particularly good work when we have specific comments, supposed to come back to us in a month, sits fallow for a year. Somebody's going to come in here later and say, oh, you prevented me from getting all those grants? What grants? What grants have we missed? If we missed the grants, it's not our fault, it's because they didn't come back to us. So I'm not real happy with it, to be honest with you, the product. I don't think it's a good work product. Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chairman McLean. And here's the problem from a factual standpoint. The last time your Open Space and Recreation Subcommittee met was last January.
Yeah.
When you, when the consultants filed the conditional approval, the state came back with a lot more than just typographical or little edits. They had a lot of very specific questions, ADA, compliance, things of that nature. They even asked about the survey, they only had 147 people respond. The answer from the consultant, with no oversight from the Conservation Commission, was, oh, there was probably survey fatigue in Wakefield. Now, I'll tell you that when we did the 40A Subcommittee, had a survey. Yeah, that's what the answer was from the consultant.
Oh, survey fatigue.
And here is the problem, the consultant provided these answers. Once again, this was all after the last time your Subcommittee met, and you've met twice where you've had this topic on your agenda. Once was in August, after you met with us in July.
Yeah.
Where Judy Green, your Chair of the Subcommittee, said the Town Council had some concerns, and the consultant's addressing them. And then the only other time the Conservation Commission met to talk about this plan was that week, when you spent the last five minutes of your meeting, a three-hour meeting, to discuss, doing a letter of support.
Yeah.
And Judy reminded the Conservation Commission that the Town Council had had some concerns in July, and the consultant addressed them. So there's been no oversight, that I can see, looking at the meeting minutes and watching your meetings from the Conservation Commission. And, you know, Counselor Chines has a nice way of insulting me that I want to spin my wheels. If I want to spin my wheels and spend time doing this, you know, that's my problem.
This is a process piece that I worry about. I did not mean any offense to Counselor Vincent. I am, quite frankly, knowing, having worked with you for so long, I don't understand why you would assume that there was any offense meant.
Okay, thank you.
And also, the meetings were 13 people and 20 people, 147ths over a four, over a four-month period.
Yeah.
I mean, this wasn't real great.
Are you talking about the?
Public engagement.
Yeah.
And it wasn't a lot of meetings, and the Lake Committee hasn't met for gosh knows how long. Counselor Carney?
From day one, I was a little bit concerned about this, because I read that whole document.
Yeah.
It was a significant document. And I questioned who had that input and some of the things that I didn't see in that survey. So I wanted to learn this, I was new on the council at the time, I just wanted to understand what's going on. But at the last meeting, it came out that state or Metro Area Planning Council, or whomever, went directly to the Conservation Commission, didn't go through us. They went directly to them. So that's another example of government from the top down. They're asking our Conservation Commission, who we appoint, who represents us, that we appoint, and you actually write statute, you have a mission, I don't question that at all. And I respect what you've done over the years, and I appreciate that you've served the town so well, but this is crazy as far as, I just don't like this methodology, because then they're going to come back and say, hey, you proved it. And I'm saying, oh, you already said, of course, and that's what people use against us. So I'd be opposed to this at this point. Thanks, Chairman.
I could just say one thing, though, as far as the getting it out to the public, this is like the third one that we've done. And, I mean, I can remember, we did monkey surveys, we did, we went door to door in the neighborhoods, getting, trying to get people to, you know, do this questionnaires and stuff like that. It's not so easy. I know it's not an excuse, but we have tried quite a few things to try to get people to respond. I mean, I bring them right to their house and ask them to fill it out, all right, here tomorrow, come back tomorrow and see if I can get it. But it's not that easy. A lot of people don't want to, they don't want to get involved.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Could I ask, were any of those efforts involving our communications manager, Jen McDonald?
I don't know about that.
Because I can say from experience, when the town has made a concerted effort to try to solicit input.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking of the 40A being one, and I understand that's more of a hot button issue potentially, so in fairness. But when we've used the kind of communication channels that are available to us through our governing structure.
Yeah.
I think we found generally good success.
And so they would do something like that? They would do?
A survey, absolutely. A survey like this, like, someone like Jen McDonald would be able to push that out through our social media channels, on our website. We could have publicity in various places, some of our kiosks, I mean, there's any number of ways, but I don't, I don't think that there is survey fatigue, because we've seen many times more than those respondents for other surveys that we've had.
Yeah.
Nor do I think we're inundating our residents with surveys. I think there, I think there were a lot of flaws with this process. I think there, I think there were a lot of flaws with this process. I think a lot of that's coming out here tonight.
Yeah.
I can appreciate the frustration of my colleagues, especially because this has been raised before and they really kind of guided, guided you folks to like where the revisions lie. And I think there's an earlier comment, words do matter. And in a document like this, I disagree that this is just meant to be just broad goals or lofty in nature. I mean, when it kind of gives like directives, and it does, it doesn't kind of, it does give directives. I mean, that, I always think about not who's sitting here at this table tonight, but who will be sitting here in the future. And I don't want to see anyone take this to mean, "Oh, well, this has been approved, so this is what has to happen." And when you have directives like that, I do think you create not just an impression, but an affirmative obligation that I think a lot of people would take to heart and understandably so. We have the opportunity now to remedy that, and I think that has to be, that has to be remedied.
Okay, I agree.
I think it would be good to have a shorter process instead of waiting a year, bringing us back to the commission sooner, having the draft and addressing your concerns as well.
But in fairness, that really falls on your team.
Yep.
And this team has raised the concerns.
Yep.
Has gone through in good amount of detail. And I do feel like there's, they're kind of repeating themselves from what has been raised before candidly, because it's been raised before, but it doesn't seem to have resonated or at least been, made its way to the document itself, which I think is an understandable frustration.
Yeah, I understand.
So we will table this to further date?
Yep. That sounds fine.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I believe, town administrator, we are, am I correct that we are now up to...
Seven C.
ARPA update?
Yes.
Seven C.
ARPA update, this is...
Screaming right along.
Screaming right along. I can, that'll be the sole brevity on this one. As the council knows, that we have a couple of sub-awards of ARPA funds, some to the EDC, a million dollars, and some to the Affordable Housing Trust that Mr. Vincent, Counselor Vincent, talked before. Part of that sub-agreement was that a quarterly report would be, would be generated through the accounting office, would be accepted by the underlying committee, and then would be presented to the, to the town council, kind of for a couple of reasons. Number one, to make, you know, we have to have this money spent by June, excuse me, by December 31st, 2026. And number two, it is really good practice and it's best practice that's come out of the Treasury Department in how to make sure these funds are expended as they were intended and, and kind of keeps us on track here. So, the EDC did meet at a recent meeting and did go through the report with the Zinyu Packet. And this includes expenditures through December 31st, 2024. So it's really quite early in the process. And so about $15,000 has been spent, but that's what's been actually spent, okay? You're gonna see a much greater difference in the quarters to come as money actually goes out. So in your package is a report showing what has been spent along with the backup material. This was approved by the EDC at, at the last meeting.
And the chair was not going to be in attendance today?
I don't see her on. She said she might be, but I just asked Sheri and did not see her on, so...
Okay.
But she did sign it in your package, so...
Yes. Any comments by the liaisons or questions on the report?
I'll just say, there's a lot coming down, like with this.
Down the pipe, yeah.
Yeah, there'll be a lot more. This is actual spin.
This is really premature, but there's a lot of facade work, sign work, and so I think next quarter that'll be...
This is just a quarterly that we wanted to engage in. So I believe I, if there are no further comments, did you have a comment, Counselor?
Just want to thank the committee for all the great work they're doing. They've been, they started meeting like every other week. I think they're done monthly, maybe, while the staff person is on maternity leave, but when they...
I can't wait till she comes back.
They keep on doing work. Steve has been filling in in the interim, but the committee's just doing great work. So we really appreciate it. And yeah, you'll see, you'll see the fruits of their labor shortly.
Right. Lot of applications for grants pending.
We're talking a second round, you know, opportunity potentially with it. And that's how well received it's been by the business community. So, yeah.
Great.
Stay tuned.
And I would entertain a motion to accept the report as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Seven zero, Sheri. Move to D, referral of the accessory dwelling unit bylaw to the Planning Board.
Yep. So this is part of the kind of persnickety statute, statutory requirements in regarding presenting zoning bylaws to Town Meeting. I believe the statute says the town council shall refer to the Planning Board for public hearing. The Planning Board has spent some time on this, gotten input from a lot of people, including the Department of Appeals and others. They will be having public hearings on the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. All this does is refer it to them so they can start having those, having those public, I'm sorry, too, having those public hearings. And I'm sure there'll be a robust discussion about this at Town Meeting. As everyone remembers, this is a law that was passed by the state legislature. We have no real standards now as regulations came out, I want to say, beginning of this month, end of January. So we do want to have this on the Town Meeting docket in May.
Quick question to the town administrator. I'll get right to you, Counselor. Is there a standard bylaw that's being...
There is one. There is one. Then we're kind of looking at it to Wakefield as well.
Counselor Carney?
Yeah, I'd like some input to us from the town planner relative to my concerns about what could or could not be in this. In fact, I think the theory's a great theory, in my opinion. It makes it a lot easier for families to have a, have a family member living with them, what have you. But there's a lot of room for abuse in this. And that's my concern, is the sense that, you know, how people can misuse it. And I want to make sure that we have requirements and that can protect the town.
Right. I think there are a lot in there, and this is actually, the town planner's been working on this.
Okay.
This is her, kind of her first initial go at it.
Yeah, I noticed there's no requirement for parking within .5 of a train station. So I guess I can rent that ADU out and not worry about parking on the street, chief. Okey-dokey. Anybody have any? Counselor Dombrowski?
So just to be clear with this, Ms. Allen, so this, we're not, obviously, this is an example of top-down governance from the state, but this particular draft is something that has come from the town planner then? Or how did this come into being to people watching?
It came in meetings between the town planner, the town engineer, building inspector, probably input from, you know, I took a look at it, Tom, Tom looked at it. So this is kind of pulling the state requirements together on it.
And is it a fair assessment of this to say that this minimally meets the state requirements? I know the script of...
It's not the same as, the requirements are a little bit different than 48. I think it's a fair assessment to say this really tried to look at setbacks and things like that to try to keep the character of the area as well as we could with it. And there will be, it will be fully vetted by the Planning Board and then alternate by Town Meeting.
So I think as long as it's just clear that we're not going to endorse this amendment.
No, this is not an endorsement to anyone.
This is strictly like a ministerial act that we have.
This is a ministerial act that we do on every zoning one that comes up.
And this is not family members only?
No. No, it is not. It is not.
No.
I don't necessarily agree with this as written, but I do understand we have a process to be followed. So that's strictly what this vote is for.
Exactly.
So with that, I'll move that we advance this preliminary draft to the Planning Board as required.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Seven zero, Sheri. Thank you very much.
Do you want to ease it?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. I just went to the URL, Steve, so I'm not sure what's next on the agenda.
The Grant of Sidewalk Easement at 1820 Melvin Street, which Mr. Mullin's gonna take over.
Okay. And council?
This will be good for an hour or two of debate. The developer of 18 and 20 Melvin Street is offering the town 223 square feet of East Mid area to round out our sidewalk. And I've looked over and made some changes to the grant of sidewalk easement. It's acceptable now, in my view. It does have to be accepted by the town council, and there is a page here that I'd ask you to sign after you vote, accepting the grant of easement. So...
And this is for the whopping nominal consideration of $1?
Yes, it is. That same dollar that we raised...
We keep passing around.
One of at every annual Town Meeting.
Yes.
Yes.
And at meetings of my fellow town councils, I rarely talk about that particular article. It's, it's a fig leaf. Anyway, I would appreciate it if you would, if you would vote in favor of accepting this sidewalk easement of 223 square feet, and then I'll pass the acceptance down for your signature.
Did you have a question or a comment?
For those who aren't familiar with the area, this is where they've been blasting ledge and digging it out at the end of Richardson. And I mean, if you haven't been by there, it doesn't look the same anymore. They knocked down two houses and they cut out all this ledge. So this is the area where they're doing it.
So I would move that we approve the acceptance of the grant of sidewalk easement with the only modification being the date, unless this is, this is a more recent version. This one says January 24.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Right. On the front page.
On the front, the signature page.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Seven zero, Sheri. And we can sign that tonight, Steve?
Yes, you can. Yep.
That's the sidewalk easement, which means that we are now on fiscal year 2026 budgets. I believe, can we skip right to budget number three there, town administrator?
Yes.
Budget number three, Information Technology Department.
He says as he's walking out of the room.
Gentlemen, they're all ready for us. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Stefan Chase from the Finance Committee Subcommittee for IT and Todd Bowden, the IT Director. We'll let Stefan start. He's reviewed this budget with Todd and he's gonna give his initial views.
Sure. So the IT Subcommittee met this morning with Todd. We went through the budget in great detail. Major differences from last year, the Munis admin support is no longer needed with the, with those, that support coming from the lead town accountant. There's a planned reduction of 1 FTE and FY26. Although the budget has a 1 FTE reduction in FY26, some of that is, some of that savings is, is being brought into, sorry, some of that savings is, is being decreased by software additions coming from some other budgets in the town council accounting budget. Overall, the centralizing of, of software into the IT budget is a good thing, but overall there's a 5% decrease in the, in the budget year over year. So we're still moving in the right direction. Other major differences in the budget for this year, there's a website upgrade forthcoming, new domain that the IT group is, is pursuing. Website will be more accessible for ADA compatibility. Also, the budget includes insurance for future website upgrades every four years. Those upgrades will be undertaken by, by an outside vendor. And one of the, the last new things that we mentioned this morning was new time and attendance software. The current product that the town has used, Novertime, which has been in place for the last 11, 12 years, that's seeing end of support in July of 2025. So the new product will be put in place with ongoing support fees with Tyler Technologies, which is one of the larger parts of the, the software budget for the town. And it has direct integration with Munis software. Additional notes here is there's also a replacement of custodial time clocks in the schools. A couple of the items that we mentioned for future, future possible additions, which may increase the IT budgets, the IT budget in the future. Police still have most of the software included in their budget. However, the IT department works close, closely with the PD department. Any new software that is brought into, so police will be brought into the IT budget in the future. Firewall subscriptions that have been covered by grants will, will, we'll see that in the budget again in FY28. One of the other things that's forthcoming that may have an impact on the budget is Windows 10, end of life in October. And depending on the, the town's makeup of its hardware, current hardware assets, some of those may go end of life or end of support at that time, may increase some hardware So there's hardware compatibility issues that may increase the budget. And I think that was, that was most of the budgetary impact items that we discussed this morning. We did go into IT security quite a bit. Also, the, I commend Todd in applying for and actually winning many grants over the years has definitely helped the budget, the IT budget. I think there's a, was a 200K infrastructure grant that's currently being pursued.
Yep, we just applied for that one.
And yeah, I think, I think that's it. That covers most of the stuff that we talked about this morning.
Thank you very much. Any questions from counselors? Counselor Carney?
Yeah, just interested, the fact that all of the remote meetings we have in town, I'm assuming that the Zoom budget outline, that covers them all?
Correct.
So all of our town meetings and elected boards, it's only, well, it's gone up about $2,800 in this year. And is there any reason for that increase?
Yeah, we expanded the capabilities a little bit.
Pardon?
We expanded the capabilities.
Okay. It's remarkably low, that's why. I'm not complaining about the cost, I'm just saying, I would have thought it would cost a lot more. Thank you.
Counselor Chines?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much for waiting us out on this one. Just a couple of quick questions. You mentioned you have some software packages that are, or some software costs that are moving from some other budgets into IT. Does that include the fire records, Govinda, things like that?
Yep.
Okay, so those really aren't new costs? It's just geography in the budget?
Just centralizing.
Okay. And then just the other question I had, we've got money allocated for motor vehicle parts and supplies. Could you talk a little bit about that? I guess I wasn't aware that we actually had motor vehicles in the IT department.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, so that, that covers parts and supplies, that also covers fuel.
Okay.
So it's fuel, things like tires, warranty work.
Okay. And I have noticed, I mean, we haven't spent anything there in the last couple of years. It's been minimal this year. it's been minimal this year. Do we expect that we'll spend up to the $5,800 or so that's budgeted?
Yeah, so at the time that was taken, all the charges had come over from the DPW.
Bless you.
So we're about a little more than halfway spent right now.
Okay, got it. So it's another sort of budget geography question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hopefully, they don't go up. They are out of warranty now with Ford.
Okay, great. Thank you.
With respect to the time and attendance software, are we still experiencing that kind of siloing where certain departments have different means with which they keep track of that, or have we been able to kind of streamline that across all departments?
This is helping to merge that together.
Okay.
So there's more capabilities in this package. We're going to get it up and running first to replace the current Novertime software in what the main people use, and then we're working with FIRE to look into if it will work out for them, if we can accommodate everything they need to do with their shift work.
And is DPW currently under this?
DPW is using.
Or is it still standalone? Because I recall them having recently upgraded, I thought, right, as something, either equipment or software itself.
So they're on the same time clocks that are slated their end of life in July?
Okay. Maybe that's what, okay, so that's what.
They might have put in for it, and then maybe that project didn't happen because we looked to merge.
But ultimately, we will, like, our goal is to have all departments across the same?
Yeah.
Just one standardized versus having.
Yep.
Okay. Then the other piece is just from an accounting perspective, and I'd raised this at a prior meeting, too. I do think it's really helpful, you know, there obviously are some departments or some budgets that generate some revenue, which we call the building department.
Right. Cash cow?
Yeah, exactly. But I do think it's really helpful, there was some discussion about grants. To the extent that that information can be included in these budgets, I think it's really helpful, because say your budget went up by seven percent, but when you had grants that more than justified that kind of an increase, that's, I think, important context to have. I mean, I'm just saying that, you know, again, I'm not trying to ding you at all for not having done it, but I think going forward, I think it helps with each of these budgets that we have, you know, some sort of acknowledgement of grants that have been received, because that matters, I think, in the deliberations here. But congratulations for what you have done. I know you have gotten a lot of grants, you know, Todd and your team, and I know obviously you're aggressively pursuing them, and those are huge, you know, especially for things, you know, with IT, if there could be, you know, one-shot system upgrades, or, you know, and obviously, IT is always changing, right? And so anything that you can do to kind of offset those costs.
Yeah, they really help on the capital side, but we haven't had a capital request in years now.
Which is remarkable, because when you think of IT, I mean, IT is one of those departments that you'd expect capital requests on the regular, and the fact that you've been able to be more self-sustaining that way because of the grants is a real testament to the work of your department, so just keep up the good work.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions from councilors?
I'll go a little longer to make sure you guys understand.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. Seeing none, or entertaining motion to accept the budget as presented?
I move that we accept the information technology budget as presented.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Presentation, gentlemen. And good work.
Thank you, Stefan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next budget is the Police Department's budget. We are recommending that this budget be increased $417,216 over the current fiscal year. The increase in personal services is $416,716. This is for contractual and negotiated increases, but it does also include one additional uniform per position. Materials and supplies and contracted services are level funded. Small increase in sundry charges, $500. The total budget request is $7,931,833.
Mr. Chairman, I do have an email that the Finance Committee Chair sent in to you and I for the meeting. Do you want me to read it to the record, or?
Sure.
I don't think it went to everybody. FinCom Subcommittee met with Chief Scory and Deputy Chief Calabresia on January fourteenth, 2025, to propose FY26's current budget. FinCom Subcommittee members, President Bill Boudry, Amy Forsythe, Laurie Wheeler, and Ed Bean, accept negotiated salary increases and the proposed addition of one additional officer. The budget is level funded. The sundry line item dues and memberships does have a $500 increase. Chief noted that the need for one additional officer is based upon the complexity of calls. Two officers respond to each call for safety purposes, sometimes more based on the nature of the call. In the anticipated increase of calls with the continued building of apartments and condos in town, he noted that he anticipated requesting more resources in future budgets. FinCom Committee members questioned the chief and asked for metrics to support the request for an additional officer, suggesting metrics such as call volumes or comparing town police resources to other similar towns. The chief provided metrics related to a number of calls and categorization of calls along with metrics related to police services in other communities shortly after the formal meeting. There is a, part of your package does have the comparison of the towns. Chief indicated that when the new Volk School opens, there will be a need for an additional resource, police officer of the Volk. I will point out that the Volk, as did Mr. Boudry, the Volk funds the police officer positions. I guess we pay our share of that as one of the 12 communities, but we don't bear the whole bill. As always, Chief Scory was very informative and transparent with all questions asked by Subcommittee members. Thank you. Bill Boudry.
Councilor Chine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I had an opportunity as the council liaison to the Police Department to sit down with Chief Scory as well and, you know, echo the questions raised by the Finance Committee Subcommittee. I did want to say, I'm very supportive of the addition of a uniformed position for a couple of reasons. I think we have in our packet the data that supports that. The other thing that I think is really relevant to understand is we have, I believe you said, nine uniformed officers roughly retiring in the next two or three years. It takes about eighteen months to hire an officer and get them through the academy and get them trained. And so I also look at the addition of this uniformed position as something that allows us to kind of get a head start on recruiting for some of those replacements. I think if we don't do that soon, we end up in a position where not only are we not at our current strength, but we're below that because of the retirements and just the significantly time it takes to fill those roles. So I think this is a responsible budget, and I'm supportive of it.
Did you have any further comments, Chief?
I just wanted to comment on staffing levels. We've been budgeted for forty-seven since I took over as chief, and I think there's only a two- or three-month window within my term as chief that we've actually been at forty-seven bodies. Right now, we're at forty-five. We have a forty-six that's graduating the academy on Friday, but once that individual graduates, he still has to spend fourteen weeks in field training before he gets up and running on his own, and we'll still be short one person. We have to start the hiring process soon. That's on hold a little bit right now due to some civil service issues, which I can answer later if anybody has questions about that. So as Councilor Chine said, just to get to the number of budgeted working bodies that we have is difficult, and where we have the nine people who could potentially retire in the next two to three years. The numbers will fall quickly if they just do decide to retire. So to start trying to get ahead of that by hiring people, if we're budgeted for forty-eight, will we be at forty-eight? Probably not. We'll always be chasing that forty-eight, but we need to have forty-six working bodies instead of forty-five, or forty-seven working bodies instead of forty-six. We have to try and get ahead of it. Call volume has maintained probably the same since COVID ended, but the complexity of the calls is much different now. It's much more complex, more officers involved, much more time consuming, and for the uniform division of the department, it's just taking up a lot more time.
Thank you. Councilor Carney?
I want to take this opportunity to kind of put things in perspective. The fact that I go way back with the Police Department and the police chiefs and some of the issues we've had there, and I think at this time and point, I don't think anybody's going to be bothered by what I say, and I know we had a lot of, a lot of great legacy police officers who I respected the heck out of. Max Remaki, the Bobby Stevens father, was my godfather, and he's the one who kept me in line when I was a kid, but.
It's a tall order.
I was, December of 1971, I heard of a fire going on at the Atwell Building of the high school, so I responded, and that's the year I was running for the Board of Selectmen for the first time. And I stood up between the armory and the Atwell Building, and we're looking at the building and seeing firefighters running back and forth, before it got to the point where it was full conflagration. And I was standing next to a police officer who was drafted, and we were chatting, you know, we weren't friends, but we went, we served in the draft together, and we went to service together. His name was Earl Lawson. A few months later, Earl Lawson was arrested as the Lawson who was burning down the town. A few months after that, the officer who caught him was arrested for shoplifting. And then we come to the thing that I think brought things to a full height in May of 1975, that's halfway through my term, my first nine years on the Board of Selectmen, we have what we know as a Vernon Street Bailey, cost the town a million dollars, where a different kind of police officer, young people, young veterans like myself, with little training, less training, I should say, not little, less training, went in with bats and broke up a party, and it cost the town millions of dollars, okay? To the point where now we have almost every person on your force chief is getting educational benefits under the CORN Act. I mean, they're educated, they're a different type of person, they're payroll members, they treat everybody with respect. And your performance with that group of extremists that you caught on Route 128 shows some great professionalism and showed what a good, educated, and intelligent police department can do. We, and I wasn't on the board, but a board that later on, of course, 1975, decided they're going to go outside the department, hire chiefs. And we've had actually two pretty good chiefs that served in that capacity. We've gone from that now to, I think, we're more concerned now about losing some of your officers to jobs outside the department. So it's a class act, we have a great police department, and I'm proud of it, I'm proud of what you've done, Chief, and the men around you, and I support, any support we can give them, I think is great.
Thank you.
Men and women, men and women around town.
Don't forget the women.
There's women on the, on his team. Yep, that's okay.
Thank you. Anybody who's heard me speak are swearing in for our new officers. Here's me talking about the value that we put on character. Character is everything. If you hire the right people, they have the right character, you don't worry about what they do, right? They do the right thing. They represent the town, the department, and themselves with pride, and that's what we look for.
Councilor DeBroski.
First off, thank you, Chief, for pulling this budget together. I know that, obviously, the majority is contractual services, but to have level funding, aside from that, I appreciate and respect certainly. And as far as the complexities, you needn't look further than just the newspaper to see the kinds of challenges that the department has in a lot of different circumstances. And there's been a lot. If you think about it, even like the last three years, what our department has gone through and what our department has faced, and what our department has done quite successfully, you know? And it's easy to just look at numbers on a page here, but when you think about the day-to-day, what that job is like, and none of your officers know what their shift is going to look like, and let's face it, right? I mean, you just never know what the next call is going to bring, and I have tremendous respect for the character that you mentioned, because that's a huge part of this, and that's leadership from the top down.
Thank you.
You set the tone, and others have adhered to it, which matters a lot. And I think the issue of officers is simply a function of our town developing and growing, and the more, it's one of the consequences, be it good or bad, of development. We have to make sure that our ratios are good. I know you've always been very vigilant about that. You're not overstaffed, but you're certainly often understaffed, and that's a reality. And just like police, just like FIRE, and ultimately, just like the schools, you know, when we have a population that's gone up by over 2,000 in the last 10 years, you know, based on the census, that's going to require, you know, more supports. And think about the construction we were talking about earlier tonight. Councilor Carney did a good job of kind of laying it out for our delegation. Hundreds upon hundreds of new units, those are all unique needs, right, that are accompanying, and those are just what are, you know, either online or about to be online. So, you know, I think we have to be really mindful of the fact that the police have such a prominent role in not just ensuring our safety, but providing a lot of important supports to our residents, and this is going to be a budget that I just expected in the years to come is going to be continuing, it's going to have to continue to track with what our population requires, and I think that's going to mean, you know, increases ultimately. Thank you.
Councilor Vincent.
Thank you, Chairman McLean. Last year, Chief, I told you that I had served twenty-six years in the military, and I served with law enforcement personnel all over the world, many states, county, municipality level, and I thought you had one of the finest police departments that I've seen in my experience. I also want to remind you that the Navy core values are honor, courage, and commitment, and those are core values that I see espoused by you and your police officers every day. And I know a lot of that is a testament to your outstanding leadership, so I thank you for your service to the town.
Thank you.
Councilor Butler.
So, talk to me, because Ed mentioned it, I think John mentioned it, you mentioned it. What's gotten more complex? Like, why are the calls more complex than they were, you know, sort of five years ago during the start of the, maybe start, maybe middle of the opioid epidemic? Like, why? I'm just confused as to like how things have gotten. Like, have we had much more domestic violence? What's our problem?
So if you look at numbers, right, everybody likes numbers, but numbers don't tell the whole story.
I know.
Okay? So last year, we had 13,717 calls for service.
Sure.
And somebody might look at that and say, well, for a town of Wakefield, that's not a lot. Maybe this other town had more, right? But when you look at the complexity of a call, another town, maybe they had 15,000 calls, but they had 14,000 cats stuck in a tree.
Right.
Okay? Our 13,717 calls, I'm not telling you that every one of them is complex, but mental health crises has had a huge impact on us. We're at the forefront of everything that has to do with mental health. We're the first ones to get called. Every one of these mental health calls is completely unpredictable. You're dealing with somebody who's not of rational mind. Multiple officers have to go, so you have multiple officers tied up. I can give you an example from this past weekend. Our officers stood at the corner of North Avenue on Street for an hour and a half, trying to convince somebody who was having a mental health crisis to get into an ambulance, to go to the hospital. Now, why do these calls take so much time? Because our officers are very patient. Everything is focused on de-escalation now, so they will take as much time as they need to, to get somebody the help that they need. One of the best statistics, I think, that was in the packet that I sent out for last year's end-of-year statistics, was user force cases. We had two. When you put that into perspective, the number of calls that we go to, and the types of calls that we deal with, that there were only two user force cases, that speaks volumes about the quality of the people that we have and the work that they're doing with a very difficult population sometimes.
Yeah.
We have the mental health calls, we have domestic violence calls. You saw the call volume, a myriad of calls, and it's not just about what they do at the call. What happens after the call? There's report writing, there's reporting to DCF, there's reporting to elder services. Documentation is everything now. So a patrol officer, in theory, should spend one-third of their shift responding to calls, one-third of their shift with administrative duties, which would be report writing, reporting to the correct authorities if somebody, old, young, needs help, and one-third should be spent doing proactive police work. What is proactive police work? That would be an officer walking the square, ran a patrol, radar in a community, somebody's complaining about speed, we send somebody out to do radar. But what happens now is where we're at, we're spending more, our officers are spending more than two-thirds of their time responding to calls and doing administrative duties. That takes away from the proactive policing.
Should we have, like, so, I guess that is, that raises the question, like, in terms of, I guess it would get to arrests or actually, like, because if you look at our sort of violent crime or even our property crime statistics, they're not dramatically, I mean, they're sort of down a little, they were up, but they're sort of in the same ballpark they've been for quite some time, even with all the new development. So I guess if it's the complexity, if it's the mental health, then is it officers we need to be hiring, or should we be having people who go out there who aren't officers, who are? Again, this gets to my question to the Fire Department, if. Again, this gets to my question to the fire department, if, like, most of your calls are ODs and accidents, then I don't know that, like, that doesn't require the pumper truck to go.
We have a mental health clinician.
It's more just, I'm joking there, but I'm also saying, yeah.
No, but I can answer the question. So we have a mental health clinician, she's embedded in the police department for 40 hours a week, goes out with the officers, has established a great relationship with many people in the community, but if you were to ask her, if she's willing to go on a certain call alone, the answer is no.
Right.
She's not going to go on that call, and she'll tell you that, and nor should she.
And I don't think I have any, I don't have any issue with the current ask, it's, you know, my goodness, you didn't come with, like, the safer brand, four of them at the same time.
I wish you did have to say that.
I know, I know. But like, one at a time, that's a fine way to go, I'm just not sure. I'm always concerned that are the amount of volume that we're projecting out, like, crime has fallen a lot over, it's not, you know, it's not the 70s and 80s with the amount of crimes we have.
Can I give you something?
Yeah.
And just put this in perspective? For what, I started here in 2000.
Yep.
So I want to give you the makeup of the department in 2000, and where society was at back then. So back then, when I started, there were 46 officers here. In the makeup of the department was a chief, three lieutenants, a detective sergeant, four detectives, we have court prosecutor, records officer, eight patrol sergeants, and 27 patrol officers. So there were 35 officers assigned to patrol. At that time, there were no school resource officers, there was no family services officer, we had no sergeant assigned to records. And put society into perspective here, the internet was in its infancy, no smartphones, no social media, no opioid epidemic, we had no homeless population in Wakefield, there was no mental health crisis, there was no housing population boom, there were no FOIA requests, no post commission, no FMLA, and with no hiring difficulties and retention. So fast forward to 2025, and we have 47 officers. We gave one officer in 25 years, and that was funded by Northeast Vogue, paying for their school resource officer. So the current makeup of the department is a chief, a deputy chief, two lieutenants, one detective sergeant, three detectives, we've had one vacancy in detectives for over 10 years. One records sergeant, one court prosecutor, one records officer, three school resource officers, one family services officer, nine patrol sergeants, and 23 patrol officers. So we're down three patrol personnel from 2000.
And that makes sense, because like, people don't steal cars anymore, people, like, you know.
They absolutely do.
Not to the degree.
So now to put society in perspective, the internet has grown exponentially. Smartphones, social media have created a whole new era of criminal activity that includes fraud, identity theft, scams, harassment, extortion. Police are at the forefront of the opioid epidemic, we're the ones deploying Narcan, following up with treatment services, we're the primary agency tasked with caring for the homeless population, we're out there providing food, clothing, transporting the shelters. We are the primary agency tasked with the mental health crisis. These calls aren't resolved in minutes, they take time.
No, and I think it's, I think that's awful, and I think, and I mean, I'm with you guys, and I think that, I don't, I'm not begrudging the extra officer here, and the question is, is, you know, getting one a year is going to probably be tough fiscally, and we'll see. We'll see how, and that's a good way to go.
And I'd like to share with you, everybody likes numbers, right? So I'd like to share with you numbers from other departments that are put together, and I'm not sure whether you got this or not, but I compared Wakefield to 24 other towns, similar populations, and everybody loves to compare us to Redding, right? So we have 47 officers, Redding has 46. However, our 911 center is staffed by police. Redding's 911 center is staffed by civilian dispatchers. They have 11 civilian dispatchers. Our 911 center is dispatched by, is man-staffed by the police, so.
So that's an interesting question. Should it be, or?
You'd have to hire 11 people. Yeah, I'm done.
Counselor Carney.
Actually, the problem we had with the old police station, the first renovation of the police station was there were people who had in mind that were going to hire civilian dispatches. And at the time, I was working in Worcester, and I worked very, very closely with the central dispatch group there, who actually dispatched both fire, and police, and public health, ambulance. And when I looked at the logistics of that, in a big city, it's possible, because basically, you have a different union, you know, you hire people and you change your job description, someone's going to unionize it and become a union group, so people aren't going to share responsibilities. So in Worcester, a large, large city, it worked because you had enough manpower on the dispatch desk to handle both fire, public safety, and health, okay? I looked at the numbers in Wakefield, and I was involved in this discussion in 2003, 2004 to 2010, and I went over it with the head of public safety in Worcester. And when we looked at the statistics, you would have had to have at least 11 people who can't do anything else in a small town like Wakefield, have to sit at a desk, you have three people around to fill in the sick leave, people go out on injury. When you look at the expense of having such a small town have that kind of services, ridiculous. So the thought was that we had an efficient operation, that we had firefighters dispatching, you know, mutual aid, and they knew the streets of the town and how to do that, and we had police officers who could also, when you run to the front door of the police station, which was not the case in the previously renovated city, police station, you had to knock at the front door, there was nobody behind the glass, you had to pick up the phone. So, and it was crazy, so they actually, we actually made it, so when you came in the front, you had to buzz yourself into the door, and someone would always see it, and the door would slam behind you to protect the citizen who might be running at the police station looking for help. So the idea of trying to do such a thing in a small town was just ridiculous, and I proved it using Worcester, which exemplified how you could do it if you were bigger.
I think you had, first.
Can I comment? Please. I just want to comment on Counselor Carney's, your comments. You're 100% right. You have to have the police officer in the station in case somebody comes in, but there's also the issue, if we have a prisoner in custody, civilian dispatcher can't monitor custody of that prisoner, you have to have a police officer in the station. The other issue is this, through conversations I've had with many police chiefs about their civilian dispatch staff, it's difficult to hire dispatchers, more difficult to hire civilian dispatchers than it is police officers, and they have such a high turnover rate, because once they get the training, they're willing to leave that agency to go another agency for a dollar more an hour, $2 more an hour. There's a constant turnover with civilian dispatchers. We have a system in place that works. Is it the best? No, but it works, and it works for us. I mean, it shocked you.
No, not at all. I would just say, the ones that you left out of your numbers in comparing 2000 to the present is also the population. The population of Wakefield, about 10% more than it was in 2000, about 24/7 in 2000, it's in excess of 27,000 now. So those are real people, you know, we're talking about 2,500 people there, give or take, that are being serviced potentially, you know, in this community without, with one more officer, when you think about that? I mean, that's, that's not a big change for a big, for a 10% population increase.
But when I did the comparison of the other four, 24 cities and towns, it came out that we have 1.71 employees in the police department for every thousand residents. If we added one officer per year for four years, that would bring us to 1.86. We'd still be the lowest of all these cities and towns. That's assuming the population stayed the same. Projecting the population out with all the construction that's going to happen, you can expect that we'll be somewhere around 30,000 residents within the next two to four years. Even with four additional officers, that brings it back down to 1.73, we're still the lowest. But I do believe that with four additional officers over the course of the next four years, we can get to where we need to be. We're very efficient people, they do good work, they work hard. There are departments where they don't have that, they just don't, we do. And I believe in my people, and I think we can do it with four. I'm not saying I won't be back here in four years saying I was wrong, but I believe we can do it.
And I appreciate all the numbers you have to back that up, because this is like, really a data-driven analysis, right? I mean, we're looking at the numbers, and that's a big part of what we should be doing in looking at this.
And one of my big concerns is, I talked about the thirds, right, the third of response, the third of administrative duties, and the third of proactive policing. The biggest number that I can't give you is what we prevent. And what we prevent is from proactive policing. And if we're not doing that, things are going to happen. So the most important number is the one I can't give you.
Counselor.
Thank you. Just wanted to kind of expand on the comments and some of the commentary on civilian personnel. I do agree with Counselor Carney that sort of looking at dispatch, I think, would be extraordinarily challenging. The question, the discussion the chief and I had when we met was, are there other civilian things that could be done in the department? And I'm thinking more around some of the administrative work, the paperwork. I mean, we talked about the fact that the requirements on our officers in terms of the stuff that they have to do outside of patrol has increased pretty substantially, and so my sort of ask would be, as we look ahead to future year budgets, if there are ways in which we could use civilian personnel to alleviate some of those other things that sort of are part and parcel of modern policing, so that we have more of an opportunity to get our officers out on patrol and out doing the things that we want police officers to do, I think that's the opportunity that may present itself. Work to be done there, but, you know, to me, that's sort of where the civilian personnel question becomes more relevant, maybe perhaps, than the dispatchers in the case of our department.
I would agree, thank you.
Don't see anything further, we entertain a motion to approve the budget as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the police department budget as presented.
Second.
Motion seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, 7-0. Sherry, thank you very much for not only coming in, but.
I'm not leaving yet.
No?
No, I have one more.
Oh, okay.
Do we do patrol cars on this one, or do we do?
Capital.
Capital.
Can we do, can we do his donation while he's, can we just?
Can we accept our donation?
No, that's actually not a good use of.
The chief's time.
Police chief time. Can we just do?
You want to do the donation, which is, donation is 7C, police department, $500?
No, no, do that, do that.
I move that we accept the donation in the amount of $500 to the police department, with thanks.
Motion seconded by Counselor Carney. Any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Okay, so 7-0.
Now you can go.
You got your 500. Thank you, have a good night. Next budget is library, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next budget is the library budget. We have Catherine McDonald here from the library director. We are requesting an increase of this budget of $65,189 over the current fiscal year. This breaks down, the increase in personal services is $55,086. This includes contractual negotiated increases, there are no new positions and no additional hours. Contractual services increase $5,103. The main increase here is the, is for the HVAC maintenance, we have a new agreement there, Kath, Catherine, I believe? Also, under materials and supplies, is an increase of $5,000. This is, this helps to meet the certification requirements for the library. Total budget request fiscal '26 is $2,088,525, with $2,035,507 coming from the tax levy, and $53,018 coming from available funds, which are the library trust funds.
Any questions, Counselor Carney?
I just want to, Catherine, I want to compliment you in the legacy, and obviously, your folks who came before you, because Wakefield has, is one of the best resources online of any city or town around here. And I've used it often to find some of my veteran colleagues over the years, and you get the Wakefield Bailey item, you get the resource of the town reports, the street lists, and everything there, and when you go to other cities and towns trying to do the same thing, the information's not there, it's not publicly available online through the library. And I just think, the library ought to take credit for that, you do a great job, and I'm planning my 60th high school reunion, and I've introduced that to four or five of the members who don't even live in Wakefield any longer, and told them what a resource they have, they thought it was the greatest thing in the world, they could look up their high school yearbooks, they could look at this, it's just a wonderful resource to have, and I know, because I've searched other cities and towns, it's just not there. I compliment you and your predecessors, you've done a great job.
Thank you. The digitization, most of it came from some grants, and Jeff Clayps, who is retired, made friends with people at the digitization at Boston Public Library, and they did all kinds of stuff for free for us. So it really, it's working, we do have a great library. I wrote something down, because I didn't want to forget to say this before you have questions, part of the reason we have a great library is because we have such great support, and it's from all of you, and it also comes from the top, from Steve, and I wanted to make sure that I said, it has been a pleasure to work with you. Anybody who can make budget fun has a really good sense of humor, and he and Kevin have made it so painless, because it isn't painless, it's tough, it's really tough. And the big thing that Wakefield has, that the other library directors might be jealous of, is that Steve 100% is always fair to the library, and that's so important. So I wanted to publicly make sure that people knew how much his work's been appreciated.
Well, it ends in June.
I know.
July, we have a few days in July.
I'm counting on Kevin.
Appreciation might end before then. I'm sure you already have, what do you mean?
Any questions on the budget, room of councilors?
I actually told Kevin I had no questions, I said, I saw the budget, I said, that looks great to me, I have no questions.
They're really, the finance committee didn't have any questions either. It's really just the HVAC, and the HVAC's aging, so we bought a maintenance contract on it, and it gives us support in the event we need repair, we get somebody to come out. So if we're a heating and cooling center, it's going to be important to have that.
Counselor.
I was going to say, and to that end, I know there were some, you know, some issues this summer in terms of cooling in parts of the building, and so I think it's a prudent investment, and appreciate you having the foresight to build that in.
Yeah, and it's short money, considering the value of it, yeah.
Steve, do we get money back from the state when it's like a public, like a heat wave or when we use the library?
If there's a state of emergency and the state declares it.
Yeah.
I would say, we could try, but we have an offer to the state.
Yeah.
We've done that all on our own.
Yeah, it might be worth it, especially if we're putting some investments in the library, and like, we're going to have more of those extreme weather, so it might be worth exploring if there's some way to get some of it reimbursed, especially for the HVAC.
Other questions from councilors?
No, stretching it up.
Okay. Seeing none. I would entertain a motion to approve the library budget as presented.
I move that we approve budget number 30 for the library budget as presented.
Second.
Motion seconded, any further discussions? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed, 7-0. Sherry, thank you all so much for coming. Thank you very much for waiting through these many hours.
Well, no, I don't have to watch it.
Which you do religiously all the time.
But you can fast forward.
It's probably a little more comfortable from home than here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we're up to IX in Latin, nine, and town administrator succession planning. I would start, I believe, with Counselor Mullen, maybe to give a little intro, and maybe town administrator can tell us, you know, what was done in the past, and then I'd love to hear from all of you. And a number of councilors have asked me to put this on the agenda, therefore I have.
Well, let's start with the charter, which tells us that the town council shall appoint by a majority vote of the full council, a town administrator for a term of not more than three years. Now, that term, majority vote of the full council, it's not all that significant given Now, that term, majority vote of the full council, it's not all that significant given that we have a full seven members. But what it means is, no matter how many members there are of you, we would need at least a vote of four. And as for the qualifications, what's required is at least five years' full-time paid experience as a city or town administrator. Okay, that's fairly clear. An assistant city or town administrator, all right. Or the equivalent public or private sector level experience. That means ignore this sentence entirely. And it says, "The town council shall appoint a screening committee to assist in the recruitment and selection of the town administrator." Now, that is significant because the... One issue that is faced by almost every town that hires a town administrator is the appointment of a screening committee or a subcommittee of the Board of Selectment or Town Council to assess the large number of applicants who you have to winnow through before you get to a manageable number of resumes. In our case, we know that we have to appoint a screening committee. Under the open meeting law, if you have a screening committee or a subcommittee of the whole town council, you may conduct interviews and you may discuss resumes in executive session at that screening committee or subcommittee level. And you may do so until you have a set of recommendations to go to the full town council. Thereafter, there can be no executive session. And the full town council, whether you want to have a screening committee or subcommittee or whatever, the full town council can never go into executive session, either to interview or to discuss, or certainly to vote on the new town administrator. The Attorney General recommends that if you have, as our charter says, we must have a screening committee, the screening committee should forward to the full town council, not fewer than three recommendations. You certainly don't have to go into executive session at all. Here I'm referring now to the screening or subcommittees. Generally, people involved in this kind of activity prefer to have executive sessions for the initial screenings because it's a way of making sure that you maximize the number of resumes that come in. There's predictably a large number of applicants who are doing this calculus in their head. If I am known publicly to be applying to Wakefield and I don't get the nod from the town council, one, my existing employer will never feel the same about me again, and two, I'm going to be embarrassed because I'm going to be known as a loser. So nobody wants the public to know that they are applying. On the other hand, you, making the final cut, cannot go into executive session. So at some point, anybody who makes it to the final cut is putting their name out there publicly. And it's worthwhile for them because at that point, they have a 1 in 3, 1 in 4 chance of winning. That's substantial. When you're 1 of 20 or 1 of 100 applicants, it's just not worth your while. For the same reason then, the minutes of the executive session of the screening committee should never be made public. Generally, as you know, when there's an executive session, once the need for secrecy passes, you should declassify the minutes. I've always taken the position that that defeats the purpose because it tells future applicants applying to Wakefield, you can't trust Wakefield to keep your secrets. Do you have any questions?
No, it was just, well, the counsel may, but I wanted you to start. Thank you for that presentation. I wanted Steve to maybe just say how it was when he was hired.
Does the screening committee have to be a public? Is it a public meeting and then you take it into executive session or can you just meet?
So whenever any public body goes into executive session, they have to open in open session. And then there has to be a motion to go into executive session, which has to be seconded, and then there has to be a roll call vote to go into executive session. All votes in executive session have to be roll call, including the vote to go out of executive session.
Counselor Carney?
Yeah, I can speak to the fact that I went through this once. And Steve reminded me that each member of the Board of Selectment at the time recommended a member for the selection committee. And then that selection committee, representing all five or seven members of the council, would do the confidential aspect of it. And Steve had to remind me because I'm saying, I don't even remember who these people were. And the fact, because at the very end, you only see whom they would recommend. If they're going to recommend more than three, it might be because another candidate, a fourth or fifth, agrees that they want their name made public and they want that chance to go before the town council. But the minimum of three served its purpose when Tommy Butler retired.
Would the charter council have, you know, a requirement for seven or it could be more, it could be less? The charter doesn't really speak to that?
Seven for what?
In terms of like if everybody, all seven members could select one member of the subcommittee.
Okay. If you have a screening committee...
A screening committee, yes.
You cannot have more than three of your members on it because four would be a quorum.
Right, so it could be some councilors, it could be all non-councilors.
It could be all non-councilors. It could be not more than three members of the town council. It could be not more than three members of the town council with any number of non-members.
Before that even happens, I think, we have an election coming up. And I think that election has to be finalized before we, you know, start actually putting something in place. We could have Steve pursue companies who will need to help us sort through it and to do recruitment. And that probably would be the first step we're looking at, Mr. Chairman.
I think Steve already has in his own mind, you know, the knowledge of the companies that do this kind of thing. I really just wanted to hear from the councilors as to, because I don't have a dog in this race, you know, I wanted to hear whether people thought we should start the process earlier, defer the process until later and so forth. Counselor Chine?
Excuse me, just one more legal point. What do we do in the meantime? Because we're presumably not going to have, you know, chosen a new permanent town administrator by the time Steve leaves. And the charter tells us, "Any vacancy in the office of town administrator shall be filled as soon as possible by the town council. Shall forthwith appoint some qualified person as acting town council to perform the duties. And the appointment of the acting town administrator shall be for a term not to exceed six months, provided however a renewal not to exceed an additional three months may be provided." So we previously discussed the possibility of appointing Kevin as an interim or temporary acting town administrator. Our charter tells us you could do that, but the total period of time should not exceed nine months.
Steve?
I kind of want to jump in front of Jonathan.
I was just going to say if you can go ahead.
Okay, great, great. I wanted to start off with a very short story and then I'll give you my thoughts on this. In 2008, a newly appointed town administrator invited a well-known town manager and a kind of a motivational speaker to help with training for his new council. They posted the meeting, met in a windowless hotel conference room before Zoom was a thing. We actually had to meet there. And discussed the roles and responsibilities of the council vis-à-vis the town administrator. After a morning of discussions and swats and marked up easels, the well-known speaker and sitting town manager in another community asked the council, what was their most important function? And a lot of answers came around the table, included setting policy, managing the budget, public safety. The speaker shook his head and stated, no, your most important function is to hire a town administrator and now let him or him do their job. And they then abruptly got up and left the meeting. Interesting. We are very fortunate here to have an excellent person who not only has the ability but also the institutional knowledge to handle a position, like Tommy just said, in the short run and I guess up to nine months or longer, the board decides. So while there's no rush, I don't think we should hibernate either. And I think it would be great if a new town administrator had, you know, six months to be with Kevin at least. So the timeframe words were Tommy saying. So I would suggest that the council look to speak with a placement firm that specializes in municipal employees, as they have a great pool of candidates and they know the landscape, can give information on who is available, who is a current TA or TM, who's looking to move to this wonderful community. Or they know up-and-coming deputies or assistants that may be wanting to move up. There are three, two or three really good firms out there, and I'll share that with the council at a later time. But you see their advertisements right now. You're looking around, you can see, you know, they're handling other communities here. So I think that's number one that we should do. Depending on the timing, as the direction as John Carney said, I would suggest that the TC set up a screening committee, town council set up a screening committee, to review candidates and to send, as Tommy said, at least three unranked finalists to the town council for interviews. I've sat on these committees in other communities, and I think the screening committee should not rank their finalists. That's up to you guys to do that. You shouldn't have a ranking from the other community, in my opinion. In 2008, as Counselor Carney said, a screening committee was advertised for, and each town council member had one pick for the screening committee. This was rather than a traditional voting. Each person had a pick, one person. There were no sitting members of the town council on the screening committee at that time. I think that's probably preferable for the council, not to have any sitting members sit on the screening committee. It can be certainly manned by the placement firm so they can handle the logistics of this. I think questions the town council needs to ask itself, not only looking at timing of this, is that should town employees sit on this? And that is the case, the town employees sit on these committees sometimes. Should a member of the finance committee sit on it? A member of the school committee? Certainly advertising of people in the committee who want to put their name in. You know, the committees that I've sat on, certainly, like Tommy said, the initial screening of these committees, of these members are done in executive session. Just for what he said is that people, they don't want their bosses to know at that time and would be embarrassing or could cause problems for them. So I do think that that's what should, that'd be my suggestion, that a screening committee be set up at some point and that we do work with a outside firm to handle logistics and handle the minutes and things like that. And by the way, my little vignette in the beginning, that was Wakefield, by the way. That was Wakefield. Yeah, no, I know you knew. So it is a big, it's an important decision that the council needs to make and, you know, we're here to help you on it, so. That's it.
Counselor Chine?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Mullen and Mr. Mayo, thank you so much for kind of the information. I think that was a great amount of level setting for all of us, perhaps other than Counselor Carney, who haven't gone through this before, you know, in this role. You know, I think, to me, what I would like to see happen really does sort of line up, I think, Mr. Mayo, with your recommendations. I do think that, you know, as much as it seems like we have a lot of time ahead of us, we really don't, and these processes do tend to take a long time. And so I think it behooves us to start the process now and not wait until April. Now, that doesn't mean that we need to necessarily have, you know, candidates presented or a screening committee now. I think what that means, to your point, Counselor Carney, is starting the process of getting a search firm in place. And in fact, I'd actually look to that search firm to give us some recommendations on the composition of a screening committee, how we set that up and so forth. But, you know, if it were up to me, and I hope that this is something that the council would support, I would love to maybe give us the green light to start talking to search firms over the next couple of weeks so that, you know, between our next couple of meetings, we can maybe come to the council with some thoughts on, you know, what kind of proposals we might be able to get. And I'm happy to volunteer to work with Mr. Mayo and Mr. Mullen to gather that information. But I do think that that's an important process to start now.
Any other thoughts, Counselor?
Yeah, I agree with you 100% Jonathan, except I think by having any member of this council work with Steve on this until we're ready to make a move, I think is a poor decision. I think Steve has the capability of doing it, presenting it to us. And he's our insulation. Everybody trusts Steve. We know he's going to do the job. We know he's going to be around for one time.
Yeah.
So I appreciate you offering yourself as a subcommittee, but I don't think that works. I just think that he can do it on his own. He's got Kevin now to work with, work with him. And I'd just rather he set it up and then he comes back to the full council.
I'm good with that, too. It's really, for me, the key issue is more the timing.
I appreciate it, yeah.
Any other thoughts, Counselor Nebraska?
I think the biggest challenge I have with all of this is like, none of this is succession planning. And we had a retreat, I think it was two years ago, where we specifically went through and identified key roles within our leadership that we thought we wanted to make sure we had a bench or at least a plan going forward. And I recall specifically Steve's position coming up. And we talked about that. And I recall, you know, Counselor Chine, you specifically saying you had concerns because it didn't seem like we had some sort of succession plan in place. And it was a fair point that you raised then, and I think a lot of us agreed with that. But since that time, we have not ended up at a better place. Now, we find ourselves where we do now. The timing of when Steve let us know, the timing of when he's departing, you know, and the installation of Kevin in a temporary, Kevin Gill in a temporary role by really by Steve. I mean, the assistant town administrator was never a job that was posted. That we funded the idea of assistant administrator, there was never a process with that. And now we're talking about basically having Steve just work on organizing who his successor is, like not choosing the person but organizing the process to get there. The whole function, like the first 10 minutes that we just heard from Town Council Mullen is that this is our responsibility. Steve just told us an anecdote where he said this is the town council's biggest responsibility. And so I think we really have to think long and hard about what we're doing here. One, we are in charge of deciding how we handle any sort of transition. The seven of us decide that. We are in charge of deciding how we put that process into place, who is involved with that process, and ultimately how that plays out. The seven of us are to do that. So I do take, and I have nothing but tremendous respect for Steve, and Steve knows that. But I do take issue with the fact that we're saying, okay, we'll leave it all to Steve to do. I don't think that's his role in this. I think that it's our role, the seven of us, to figure out what that looks like. And if it is, we have to, you know, have a couple of people, you know, speaking to some search firms or whatever the case is, just to kind of get the ball rolling, then come back in the next meeting, say, hey, this is where we're at. We got a couple... You know, we put out RFP to three different search firms, for instance. Each person agrees to like speak to one of them and then kind of report back, hey, this is what they had to say in terms of the process. I think there are things we can do like that, but I don't understand why we just... We're tasked, you know, by the charter with making these selections, installing these folks, and I feel like we're not doing that if we're not owning the process from the beginning.
Counselor Butler?
Yeah, I...
Yeah, I, I'm with Ed here in terms of this is not, we cannot abdicate this to Steve. And this is not, frankly, you know, this is probably the number one reason why I ran is because I was worried about this process. And I was worried about like, oh, what are we doing next? And I know you, you said we went, the last time we did this, we didn't have anybody from the council on, we didn't have anybody. We're going to have, we're going to have a finance committee, we're going to have a school committee member on, but we're not going to have one of us on this selection committee? And then we're going to, think about it in your own jobs, in your real jobs, that would you ever have, delegate the authority to winnow down and just have, would you ever have HR just give you three people to pick from, to work for you? I wouldn't. I don't do that for my analyst teams. I like, they, they certainly help, but we're actively involved in that selection process. And I think we do, and we have, we have a lot of things to decide before we even get to this notion of like who are the best consultants. We're a town that has never had a non-resident administrator. We, I think, should answer the question, is that something, like, does that matter to us? Like, it might. It might make a ton of sense to try and find somebody with local knowledge. I don't know that the answer's that, but we're not even asking that question. So I think we need to make sure we, the seven of us, in conjunction with Steve and in conjunction with Tom, have an idea about how we want to set this process up. So again, you know, we can go talk to headhunters all the month. I mean, you know, three search firms are, generally you're not going to hire three search firms, but yeah, search firms will help, but like probably this is, this is probably something that one or one, one of them might be able to help with. And frankly, like, it isn't 30 years ago. You're not doing, your executive search teams are not quite the same as they were.
Counselor Chair.
Thanks. So I just want to clarify, I am not suggesting that we are kind of outsourcing the process to Steve. I think, you know, my direction today would be to ask Steve to contact, I mean, there are basically three search firms that do this for municipalities in Massachusetts. Basically to come back to the council with proposals from those three search firms so that we could make a decision on how we want to proceed. You know, we as the council still have ultimate authority because at the end of the day, we are the appointing authority and that, nothing from a process standpoint around hiring a search firm changes that. And while I agree, you know, I don't like to, you know, when I hire people in my professional life, kind of have HR do all of the screening, I also, in my professional life, am not a public body that has to do everything in open session. And so I think that's another reality that we just have to be mindful of. And this is where, quite frankly, having a contracted search firm to help us, guide us through those decisions, someone who's kind of worked in this space for municipalities before, I think just has a lot of benefit in helping us to make sure that, you know, we strike that balance between making sure that we as a council are, have input into the process or making the ultimate decision, but we are working it through in a way that is both kind of enabling of people applying from a diverse set of backgrounds and also enabling us to do so in a way that is efficient, given the constraints that we have as a public body.
Do we have constraints as a public body here? Because we open in open session and then we go into executive session.
So we just heard, we as a town council can't go into executive session.
No, 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 but whatever, whatever three or two or two plus seven or whatever it is, that's what it would do.
So the screening, my understanding, Mr. Mullen, please jump in, is that whatever screening committee we decide to apply, and I'm not, you know, saying, suggesting who that screening committee is today, but that screening committee can go into executive session to do initial screening.
Yeah.
If that screening committee has more than three members of the town council, though, that becomes a town council meeting.
Yeah, no, 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 we can't have more than three.
Yeah, so I'm not even at that step yet. I'm just, I'm literally focusing just on how do we start the process? And to me, that's looking at a search firm.
But if we have consensus that a search firm is appropriate, and the sense that I get is there's general consensus on that, we have two members of this council who have indicated they do not plan to run for reelection. So our chairman and Counselor Vincent. It would seem logical, if they were willing, to at least have them do a bit of the vetting to understand who the search firms were and then come back to us and say, hey, you know, we got proposals from, you know, three search firms, you know, this is what they have to offer, you know, and offer a little perspective on that. And then we, as a body of seven, could maybe select who the search firm is. That sounds like step one, right? I think the question is, how do we get to that search firm? Certainly Steve has institutional knowledge, or I should say, he has professional knowledge working with other communities, so he knows who the other, you know, there, it's no big secret to your point, Steve. I mean, you can look and see the postings. I mean, there's the three firms. We end up hiring one of them, whoever we think is best. But I think if we have Counselor McLean and Counselor Vincent, if they're willing to take a look at that and give, offer a little perspective on it, it kind of keeps any of the ultimate decision makers out of the process of just selecting the search firm. So the search firm doesn't feel as if, you know, they're beholden to a particular town councillor who brought them in.
Counselor.
I'm totally opposed to that, Ed. You know, I, either if you want to put me on a committee, yes, sir. But I'm not selfish, in fact, that, you know, I don't want to be one of the three. I want to be one of seven. And all the way along, I think you should be one of seven. I think there's nothing wrong with Steve coming up with three companies and having them brought in and we interview them. As a council, what's wrong with that? Why should we have a committee, subcommittee of people who are steering it in our direction? I want to be part of the decision the whole way and I want my vote to count. And that's why I feel strongly, we as a council should do it, not any subcommittee. And I'll do respect to, to the chairman and, 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 you know, it's, I don't think, appointing anybody.
I have no objection with what you're saying. But I do have an objection with, with Steve, you know, taking the reins of it, which is five minutes ago what we were talking about.
I wasn't talking about that, Ed. I was talking about getting the candidates and we meet them.
Getting the candidates for the search committee.
Yeah.
What I'm trying to say is, I don't think, I don't think it falls on Steve alone to do that, is what I'm trying to say. I think that that's, I think it's broader than that. If there, if there's probably three, maybe four firms, I don't know, I'm happy to have them come. I'm happy to have the seven of us listen to their pitches. I, I don't think, I have no objection to that. I think it's a good idea. I'm just saying that I think that the next step, just the logistics of getting there, if there's any concern about like, okay, will the people on the council, on the council, whatever, I'm saying that we have two members who are basically laying ducks at this point, you know, who could work with Steve on that to make sure that we have the right names that come before us. That's it.
I'll tell you what we didn't have with Tom Butler, okay? We didn't have Tom involved, okay? We have Steve here, who's the person who is the success of this town, who did what he did in this town, no matter who the town council was. And to this day, he's gotten along with all of the various people that elected, okay? And we have him as a resource to help us find the next town leader? What, we'd be, I think it's ridiculous that we aren't using him as a resource. He's willing to do it. He says, I asked him that question a month ago. He said, John, I'm not going anywhere. So to have that kind of guidance, someone who, who has brought us the success that we kind of represented to our representatives here today, you know, why are they, why are they trying to take care of the communities that didn't do a good job? Now, it's because of Steve that we had a good job. Why won't we listen to his guidance? I don't think we're, we're advocating any authority here. We're just saying, okay, Steve, get us three, three or four, whatever you want to do, committee, excuse me, companies that want to come in and do searches for us.
Right. John, I don't think any of us are concerned with Steve. I mean, to be fair, Steve, you can pick the goddamn search firm for all I care. They're all going to put out the same like blast email to everyone and like we'll get the applicants, they'll all come in. And that's the other question, is does a search firm matter here? Is it something where like they need to have, be able to reach out to people on the down low and like know, have institutional objects? That might be really important. I don't think any of us were like abdicating that. We were abdicating, we were questioning whether or not we were going to have Steve like work with the search firms, build out the resumes, winnow it down to the three people. And then that's where I think, that's where Ed and I were saying, ah, no, that's, we can't do that.
Why can't we all just submit names to the town administrator, I mean, to the, to our, to the chairman of firms that we're interested in? There will probably be three or four names ultimately submitted to you and then we invite them to a future town council meeting. Why don't we just do that?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. So that is, I mean, I don't even think we need to submit the names. I think there are literally four firms that do this in Massachusetts.
We're negotiating over the document here.
My request, and maybe, I'm going to make this as a motion, just given the time, would be to authorize the town administrator to contact three to four search firms to have them come back to a future town council meeting in the next, I would say, four-ish weeks, you know, so that the council can hear what they have to offer and ultimately make a decision on moving forward with one of them. I apologize, that's a poorly constructed motion, Sherry, but.
Was that a second or you have a comment, Counselor, go ahead?
No, I, I'm not, I have a comment and I, this is for kind of Tom, and I don't mean this for disrespect of Steve or Kevin or anyone, but we as a, so I am hearing, you know, one of our most important duties is to pick the town administrator. And I'm assuming that also means voting on an interim town administrator. And we have not done that yet, correct? Like, so someone who's a deputy, like July 4th does not automatically become it without us having a vote. I just want to be clear that as we're talking about search committee, like there's still a decision that needs to be made in this interim. Like, there will be an interim period and you, the timeline was really helpful. I didn't know our charter. We were so smart when we wrote that charter. But I also want to, like, when we think about calendars and talking to search committee, like, we're going to have to take a vote between now and July about that interim. And again, no disrespect to anyone, but, you know, it was, it was proposed in a, that was kept, that was, sorry, that was Steve's proposal and we as a council have not voted on that. I've not had conversations with anyone that was listed in it and like I, that is something as a town councillor, too, I would want to do in an interim position. What does interim mean? You know, does the person want it and all of that? So I would love that to be part of our timeline as well, because I, I hear you, Ed, like this is one of our important jobs and it's, the interim, it's the long-term, it's the future of this town. So I'm not so concerned about the search committees, but yeah, let's bring them in and have them talk about timeline. Because I don't, I hear that it takes 18 months, but I know some towns it didn't take that long. Reading did not take that long. Bedford, no, Lexington did not take that long. So I would love to hear about what it looks like and what the candidates look like and...
Does, did it say that we had to appoint an acting town administrator?
Yes.
We have to.
If there's a vacant.
Manning the store.
But could we find someone in five months? Who knows?
Counselor.
Just one point, we've been talking about hiring search firms. I think there's no way to avoid the public bidding process in finding a search firm. Now, just how, just what is required, I think depends in large part on how expensive it's going to be. And I don't have a feel for what cost we're looking at here.
That's why I mentioned RFPs earlier, because it seems like that would be the appropriate next step in this, right? I mean, again, it's probably three, three firms or four firms that are going to be submitting.
Just a point of information for you to Mr. Mullen. The number that I heard when I was just kind of poking around at MMA a couple of weeks ago was somewhere between $15,000 and $20,000 for a search firm. How does that stack up relative to procurement law?
Yeah, I think, you know, given we're not buying widgets, we're, you know, probably the RFP process makes sense. And we'll, we'll keep it necessarily simple because there's not an awful lot of time. But basically, we just want to see what kind of proposal would come in. And we, of course, want them to provide a price proposal separately from their substantive proposal. You'd probably want to interview, if you say there are three or four, I don't know, then probably all of those major competitors.
So given that, I'm going to amend my motion and ask the town administrator to issue a request for proposals for search firms with the expectation that proposals will be brought back to this council in a month's time.
Second.
Is that enough time, Steve?
I'm sure it is.
Ed, sure it is.
This is a, it's a very, like, it's a niche industry here, right? So they're, they have a standard, like, proposal. We could get it within a week.
I think it, I think it should be.
Okay. And John, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Tom, with a request for proposal, and again, I know state law regarding that, are we allowed to negotiate a price afterwards? Okay. So basically, we're interviewing for the qualifications and then separately, we look at the price and negotiate a price with them. Okay. I'm agreeing with that.
So we have a motion seconded. Any discussion on that? Do you remember what the motion was?
I have no idea, but I'm going to go with yes.
RFP for a search firm, come back in a month.
RFP for a search firm, back in a month. All was a favor. That's seven zero, Sherry, if you're still there. To play TV screen, I have no idea. She's made it this far.
Yeah, I, I'm here, I get it.
Okay. All right. You're the voice of the darkness. Do we have any?
Sherry, you always say your hours might be different now, so we have to check.
Exactly.
Well, let's make sure we're done with succession. Are we done with succession party for this?
I mean, obviously, we'll be continuing to talk about this, but I think this is a good first step. I mean, this is a tangible thing to do that gets the process going.
I wanted you guys to input, like, not controlling this process. All right then. Next item, we have your annual town meeting, we have proposal dates. Do we have an open word, closed word? Are these, can we take them all at once?
Sure. And this would be going back to the Monday, in the spring, we normally suggest Monday, Thursday evenings.
To your knowledge, it doesn't coincide with anything.
I've checked everything that, everyone checked their phones for holidays and things like that.
If we could just remind folks that this is really a message of COVID. When we started alternating the Saturday mornings and the evenings, it was kind of like splitting the difference, basically. There are people who are big fans of the Saturday morning, there are people who are big fans of the evenings. There's not, obviously, unanimous, you know, feelings one way or the other, but we're doing the best.
I feel like our feedback has been pretty much 50/50 for each day.
I think it has been. So, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we propose the date of May 5th, 2025, at 7:00 PM at Galvin Middle School to open spring town meeting, that we open the warrants as of this date, February 10th, 2025, and that we close the warrant on March 7th, 2025, at 12:00 noon.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? See, done. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven zero, Sherry. Donations. A, Council on Aging, $160 from various donors.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the Council on Aging donation of $160 from various donors with thanks, as well as the Health and Human Services donation of $63 from the Boys and Girls Club of Metro North with our thanks.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Seven zero, Sherry. Prove a minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the January 27th, 2025 minutes as presented in the packet.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? See, done. All those in favor? Opposed? I'll call it seven zero.
I'm abstaining.
Oh, six, six zero with one abstention from Counselor Dubrasky.
Were you here?
I was here for that one. That was the one before that, sorry. No, yes, seven zero.
Seven zero, Sherry. Let's redo it again, sorry. Okay. Announcements? Anybody have any announcements? And if you don't, that's fine, because it's after 11.
I might have at one point.
Lost, they're gone now, are they? See, nothing matters non-anticipated for the agenda.
I have one.
Yes. Do you?
I'm sorry. Thanks. I try to avoid it, but this came in late. There is a regulatory agreement for a LIFT project, Renly Residences at 62 to 76 Foundry Street. This is 58 units. And what I need is a vote authorizing the chair to sign the regulatory agreement on behalf of the town. agreement on behalf of the town. I've looked it over, it's perfectly fine, it's the form that's required by EO HLC in any event. And I have the document that the chair can sign tonight if there's a vote authorizing it.
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? See, none, all those in favor? Opposed, at seven zero, Sherri. Who we have left? We have the chairman.
Last line on that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn this meeting and reconvene the next on Monday, February 24th at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, seven zero, Sherri, on closing this meeting at 11:05. P. E.